Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the whole for Tuesday, July 13th. Our chair is Council Anderson. He is running a bit late, so I'm going to start meeting because we have a big agenda. Please look at my home mail. We're meeting today on the traditional territory of this one. They have a motion to adopt the agenda. By conference, secondly, conference and opposed motion carries. We need to pass Minister M192. Meeting to ensure openness, transparency, accessibility at this meeting. Meeting is being live streamed. A video of this meeting will be available on the website with you on a non-annual basis. Meeting is open to the public for electronic attendance. We will have limited in-person attendance in council chambers to observe the meeting. And there is someone here. So. Yeah, someone moved that motion. By council, they're saying they can't support any opposed motion carries. Just a reminder to council, all the electronic meeting rules still apply. You all know them by now, so I'm not reading them. So first up is the staff report. Item four, the North Crumpet Neighborhood Plan Engagement Process. And I will turn over to Mr. Gunn.
Good morning. My name is Matt Gunn. I'm a community planner with the District of Squamish. Today I will be introducing the North Crumpet Neighborhood Plan Engagement Process. I'll start with a brief background. An application to develop a neighborhood plan for the North Crumpet area was received in February of this year. This is an OCP Amendment Application. If the application is successful, the plan would be adopted as a schedule to our OCD. Proposed neighborhood plan area covers the North Crumpet parcel adjacent to Valley Cliff. This is located just north of the existing Crumpet Development. It is the southern portion of a larger parcel. The parcel has previously been referred to as District Lot.
Mr. Gunn, were you going to share slides or are we just going to listen to you?
Oh, sorry. Apologies.
I mean, it was riveting, but some pictures would probably help.
Yeah, fair enough. Hey, if you don't have to look at me, that's no problem. Here we go. Tell me if I've got that right.
Yeah, we can see that now.
Okay, thank you. Apologies. And yeah, so maybe I'll just reiterate as a background. The parcel is located just north of Valley Cliff, north of and surrounding the existing Crumpet Development. And it's the southern portion of a larger parcel, District Lot 515 or Lot 1 South, which it has previously been referred to as. At the April 13th Committee, the whole meeting, council did consider the planning and engagement process for the application, which had been proposed by the applicant. Council provided a number of comments at that time. And some of those comments included the following. Decision making regarding access should be considered in relation to engagement, given the significant implications of the project and the access. A comprehensive set of land use policies that would make up the plan should be considered by the public prior to readings. The proposed one-year timeframe that was initially proposed by the applicant was unrealistic. And naming of features should involve the Squamish Nation. In response to council direction regarding the application and neighborhood planning in general, the proposed application process has been updated by the applicant. The planning process involves three major rounds of public engagement and does meet the involved level of public participation on the IAP2 spectrum. Each round includes a broad range of activities and engagement activities, and is followed by a presentation of a summary report to council in a subsequent step. The engagement program outline highlights a diverse range of stakeholders that will be addressed through the process. Comments previously highlighted by council regarding the application and sub area or neighborhood planning have been addressed. The process will be flexible and responsive to the public input as the plan evolves. Details have been provided about a neighborhood plan website that will be used in the planning process. The website will host online surveys, comment forums, online public engagement events and what we've heard. This is intended to address some of the comments council made regarding online engagement more generally in regards to planning processes the district has been involving. And the process includes presentation of a comprehensive version of the land use plan and accompanying policies in stage eight prior to the legislative by law adoption process. In addition, the applicant has adjusted the strategy to include a more realistic timeframe, which is expected to include in the spring of 2023. This timeline is considered appropriate by staff, provided there are no unforeseen delays in the process. The process involves 10 steps and the timing of the major engagement steps are highlighted on this slide. Step two of the process is the current council authorization stage that we're in. Step four, which will occur this summer and fall, is the initial public engagement step that will begin the dialogue with the community through a range of activities, including mailers, social media, the website, interest group meetings, open house workshops, and if permitted by the public health office, and walking tours. Step six, which will occur or is intended to occur next winter and spring, will focus on presenting neighborhood plan options to the community based on results from the early stages and background research, and will use similar engagement strategies as step four. Step eight, which is intended to occur in the summer and fall of 2022, will present a proposed vision and land use plan to the community through mailers, online channels, and an open house against similar strategies used in previous steps. And finally, step 10 will be the legislative by law adoption process. And the intention is for that to conclude sometime in the fall of 2022, the spring of 2023. Access to the proposed neighborhood was highlighted as a critical consideration for the planning process in previous discussion with staff and by council. The initial primary access is expected to begin in Valley Cliff from the Cherry Drive area. Several options from Valley Cliff have been considered, but the Cherry Drive option is the preferred option, both by staff and by the applicant, and that access is identified by the red arrow on the screen. A key challenge for this access route is an environmental covenant just adjacent to the boundary with Cherry Drive and Westway. That covenant is an environmental covenant held by the province. However, the province, since the initiation of this project and discussion with the province, has confirmed that the province is willing to consider an amendment to the covenant, given that a road connection between Valley Cliff and Loggers East is a priority for the district and outlined in our official community plan. So given that initial positive response from the provincial staff, district staff feel pursuit of a parallel process that both looks at the land use planning with the engagement with the community while running parallel with resolving the access and the crossing of the covenanted area is an appropriate strategy to move forward. An additional access may be possible from the north by crossing land owned by the Squamish Nation, which is identified by the blue arrow, and this is a critical component of the creating the access connection from Valley Cliff to the Loggers East area. Staff have had an initial meeting with the Squamish Nation and provided additional details for their consideration of their request. Further discussion with will follow once a response from the Squamish Nation above that information has been received. And finally, engagement with the Squamish Nation will be an important aspect of the process, given their role as an owner of many adjacent properties and their ownership of the land where a connection to Loggers East is desirable. Staff have initiated government-to-government engagement with the Squamish Nation regarding the planning process. At an initial meeting, staff requested direction on how the nation would like to be engaged. The Squamish Nation has made some preliminary requests, which have been addressed in the engagement plan. As staff, district staff are currently awaiting further direction on the topic from the Squamish Nation. The applicant and staff are interested and keen to support any requests made by the Squamish Nation. And so we're looking forward to further discussion there. In response to council direction to engage the Squamish Nation in the naming process for features within the planning area, staff have asked the Squamish Nation for feedback on their interest in this possibility and will follow up with them based on their response. That concludes the presentation. Staff recommend that council receive the staff report and endorse the proposed engagement plan with promise.
You can't hear Council Anderson.
There we go. Acting Mayor Eric Anderson in the chair. Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Order any questions, counsel for Mr. Gunn.
Chair. Yes. Can you see me?
Sorry, Counselor Reese.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gunn, I just. With respect to the engagement of the nation, I'm getting an echo. Is there something happening in City Hall? Now you're muted.
Try now, Counselor Reese.
Testing one, two, three, four. Sounds better. Hope I remembered what I was going to ask. So, Mr. Gunn, with respect to the nation, there was, I guess there's two things. One is when you talk about naming features, what does features include as the types of things? And the second aspect or second question is respect with respect to the access and the access at the north. And also, I would expect the access out of nation lands that are to the east, the other development parcel that the nation owns in that area on the other side of the subject lands here. And it struck me that those were, when I was reading the report, I got the impression, maybe I misread it, that engagement with the nation and in some respects would come a little bit later in the process. But from my perspective, it seems almost a critical component to establish almost in day one where the connections with this property are going to be to surrounding properties and the rest of our road network. Can you speak to the timing of this or how this might unfold and also what these features might be?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so first off, with regards to naming, staff do not at this time have a specific type of feature or set of features that we feel are appropriate for Squamish Nation to be engaged in naming. What we've done is reach out to them with an open question saying, are you interested in being involved in naming? I think that the naming could range from, you know, small features, minute features, physical features, roads, all the way up to the name of the neighborhood. We have tried to keep it fairly open across the entire gamut of potential elements of the plan that could be named and are looking for any response from the Squamish Nation as to what their level of interest is in that. So we haven't targeted or set in our mind any specific elements that are appropriate. We've tried to be open and provide them an opportunity to let us know what their interest is in being involved in naming. But we have tried to keep a fairly open slate on what's possible is to include and also open to comments from council on what they feel is appropriate in that regard. And maybe I'll answer the second question right off the bat. So, yeah, the access, because the Squamish Nation does own land both to the north and to the east, there and access routes from the north certainly cross Squamish Nation land. There's one of the potential access routes from Valley Cliff that could cross through Squamish Nation land to the coming from Valley Cliff. So their engagement early on is critical. And we've met with Squamish Nation twice. The first meeting was prior to meeting even with council. It was really early on trying to give them that very first touch discussion, letting them know the process is getting going and asking them how they want to be engaged. With the, in terms of how they will be engaged to the process, the nation has asked that there that a parallel process be run for their membership through the entire program. And the applicant who will be running the engagement activities has agreed to do that. So they won't be engaged later in the process. They will be engaged at every step along the way. So when we go to the public with an open house and online details, that same process will be replicated for Squamish Nation members in the community. The government-to-government engagement will continue as well throughout the entire process. And I do agree that this is, it's really important to understand where their interests are in terms of supporting the access. In discussion with the applicant, we suspect that the access from the south will be the primary access. And so the plan would likely come up with a development that could occur only with access from the south. And then if at a point in the future, access was possible from the north, crossing over Squamish Nation land, there could be additional development that could be possible at that point, given additional capacity for road access. That's kind of the way we've looked at trying to address that different access options and what capacity that might provide for development in the area. From the south end, because the crossing from Cherry Drive does not go across First Nations land, it only crosses that provincial covenant area and it goes right into the land owned by the applicant. And the province seems supportive of that. I think that access route from the south is going to be something that we can address without having to go onto Squamish Nation land. And so I think we can run the process with that idea in mind, knowing that there might be additional development in the future.
Just to follow up, Chair. And so. So two things. One is with respect to the property to the east, my thought was that that would actually be to the benefit of the nation, I assume, to have connections kind of line up where they might go. I have no idea of their development timeline for those properties, but it looks like just from the topography that that's the way that particular parcel will connect with the rest of the district is through, probably through this property and perhaps through the other nation property or Westway Avenue, et cetera. So that was one aspect of it is just so that they could, for their benefit, line up their thinking at both ends of this development. But the other, just in the question of who might conduct this engagement, because this is, you know, the Loggers East plan, for example, was a district-led sub-area plan. And this is a developer-led sub-area plan or neighborhood plan. I'm not sure if there's a difference or whether it's just different terminology. Is the developer expected to play a role with the nation? Or is it all coming through our staff? As the intermediary?
Through you, Chair, to respond to those questions. So with regards to your first question about access and the benefit to Squamish Nation for the lands of the east. If the access route to Crumpet North runs through the properties to the east, it is a very circuitous access route and not a preferred access route from the staff perspective to get onto North Crumpet. The access route, the access to that Squamish Nation-owned parcel to the east would likely come from the east end of Valley Cliff area, the Ravens Plateau area. And, you know, my, from our initial discussion, I believe that would likely be a separate access point than the preferred access, which would go straight from Cherry, the Cherry Drive Westway into the applicant's parcel. So I think that's something that could be added on as a future access point. It wouldn't be our preferred way to get to the North Crumpet parcel, and it wouldn't be, it certainly wouldn't be our preferred way to have a connection from Valley Cliff over to Loggers East, because it ends up making a big loop to get up there.
If I can just stop, no, and that was not my thought. I wasn't thinking of accessing this property, the Crumpet property, through the eastern Squamish Nation lands. But eventually those eastern Squamish Nation lands are expected to develop. And it's the access for that property out to Loggers Lane or the rest of the municipality would, it looks like, go through the Crumpet property. And so when you're planning out the Crumpet property to anticipate a future crossing or future traffic coming from that, from that eastern area, eastern Squamish Nation lands. So I understand the Cherry Drive point, and I wasn't questioning that. It was just, it would seem beneficial for the nation to identify, if they could at this point, where that east portion might connect to the rest of the district.
Through you, Chair, fantastic. Yes, understood. Then I see your, 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 your point. And in our, when we had our last meeting with Squamish Nation, they asked us for detail about the different access routes that we're contemplating, the pros and cons of those. And they wanted to then look at that and provide us responses to how that might fit into their interest. And we're now waiting that response. And so they'll, that discussion is happening or has started and we're, we're on that topic. We will certainly look to see from them if they're, if they say, for example, hey, we'd really like this to incorporate and access possibly from these lands. That will be fully within the discussion that we're targeting. So, yeah, good point, and we're on that. You asked another question around developer-led versus district-led. What we've, the district has been leading the discussion as a government-to-government engagement process. Although because of the, the nature of some of the decision-making around how the development will occur around the access, we have had the applicant involved in one of those meetings. And I foresee the district continuing to lead the discussion with the Squamish Nation, but bringing the applicant in for discussion at meetings that are relevant and appropriate. And then the actual engagement activities where we're running workshops or doing online activities, those will be led by the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Just through the chair, one last clarification. You had asked about sub-area planning and neighborhood planning, those terms. Our OCP uses the term sub-area planning, but we consider sub-area planning and neighborhood planning as interchangeable terms. But sub-area planning is a bit maybe of a jargony term and maybe less approachable from the, you know, community resident standpoint. And so we're trying to, while the OCP says sub-area planning, we're trying to use the term neighborhood planning in general in our public communication so that the community has a better sense of what's going on. I think maybe we should have done that in the OCP originally, but, you know, we're planners and we got a little jargony there. So trying to maybe fix that. We'll fix it next OCP.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Before I go to Mary Elliott, I wonder if I may have missed a hand, other questions?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gunn, in terms of step six and step nine in this process, I think that more attention needs to be paid to the climate change issue. And so the first time we see it is actually in step nine. And that's when we present plans. Sorry. Might be in step 10, actually, and item 17, it says consideration of climate change impacts. But I think when we take options out to the community, climate change impacts at step six should be well thought through so that people are weighing the pros and cons of the at least two options there. And I, you know, I think about it in terms of, you know, by the spring of 2023, we'll be about nine years away from all homes requiring to be net zero and seven years from us as a district having to reduce our emissions by 45%. And so I don't think we can skirt around some of those deadlines we've set for ourselves and other ones that are provincial. So I think it just needs more language around what we're trying to achieve with each of the neighborhoods that we're planning. They should be contributing to the reduction in GHDs, not adding to the challenge.
Through the chair. I think that's, that's a great point. You know, I think it would be very reasonable to ask the applicant to add a lens to the discussion of neighborhood plan auctions and specifically related to how every auction relates to contributing to meeting our climate change goals. And I think that was inherently in mind when, you know, we're contemplating the forms of growth that would likely be present at that point, but probably an oversight not to have that articulated in the planning process. And I'm confident that they would be very interested in adding that lens, which I think would tail in well with what is dropped to do.
Thank you. And just a minor point of detail. Cedar Sky Community Services holds an outreach contract for the problems. So they're not listed under under-housed residents and former stakeholders, but they should be. They are listed elsewhere as a community stakeholder.
Sorry, can you just say that one more time? I didn't quite hear clearly what the group was.
Cedar Sky Community Services.
We'll make sure they're in the underhouse.
And then are there any technical reports that you're expecting to take a long time? I know that stormwater management really held back the Loggers East plan. And I'm wondering if there are any technical reports in step three that, that are expected to be difficult or more challenging.
Yeah, so if we're in discussion with engineering staff and the applicant who are getting some of these reports completed, we haven't, there hasn't been highlighted concerns around the timeline for having these reports ready for the initial public engagement. Although I will say that the, there is an iterative process with the traffic impact assessment where there has to be, you know, some consideration of, you know, what's being proposed, what level of development, helmet, how many units, for example, and then what the impact of that is. And so, you know, I think their intention is to pursue the, the traffic impact analysis and have information available, but know that it's going to be updated over time. I think the, the crux with the, with the report regarding traffic will be what route is going to be used, which routes are going to be viable and whether there is access from the north. And I think the, I think the plan, you know, and I tried to speak to that briefly, is to try and run these in, in, in parallel, make an assumption about the, because the province seems as supportive of the Cherry Drive access, make an assumption that that would likely be possible. Now, if that at a later point turns out to be not viable, that could create that uncertainty and, you know, that you're speaking to essentially similar to where, you know, there is a technical aspect in Loggers East that creates some challenges. If it turns out that we can't cross there at Cherry Drive, that would create some differences. But at this point, the discussion of the province has been positive. It's more about a process rather than supportive intention. And then the other piece is the, the access from the north. And, you know, we're awaiting response from Squamish Nation. They did highlight that there is interest in the economic development opportunity that would be involved from having access from the north. And so there is an interest there. But that, you know, I think there is going to, they're currently looking at the information and discussing it across a range of departments within the nation. That was what they had asked us for that information for. And so that information coming back will be very important to understand whether or not we have clarity on that north access route. So there are some potential unknowns with regards to, to access. But so far, the indications look positive to provide us with a program that we can engage on. First, go with these mics. Is that okay for everybody? Okay, my question is. Given that this is a, I do think a reasonable timeframe on it now. How do we account for all CVPs under development in the district and how that will apply? I'm thinking Steve Gill comes to, comes to mind as, as an example. And just sort of at what point do you lock in with which policies are applicable to the, this planning process?
Okay, I really apologize. I've got to plug in some headphones here because I couldn't quite hear. Okay.
Again, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I'm using Jonas's office right now, so nothing's quite right. Okay, apologies. Can you, can you repeat that question?
I can, and you're really quiet on our end now, but that's okay. Away, away we go. Okay.
Okay, wait, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, and you, me?
Yes. Much better.
Okay, so as this, this process, I think it has a reason. Okay, so um as this this process, I think it has a um a reasonable time, uh more realistic timeline. Um, but considering other work will be underway in the in the district as it always is ongoing uh development of of policies, at what point do we lock into which policies apply to um to the, to the plan? Like, Steve Gill comes to mind. I noticed in the report, there was a an assessment, this sort of buildable land that went into the the slopes and so on. And I'm just how that um, how those pieces interact, sort of the ongoing development of policy, whatever it may be, and um and on this plan, given that the adoptions for 2023, so somewhere over the horizon slightly.
Right, okay. Um, so, for example, um is is the thought like, okay, so say we develop some new DPAs, uh like a steep slope DPA. Um, we're we're proceeding along, developing this um, this suburbia plan, and could some further policy that we want to utilize to um uh consider how applications are addressed in this area? Um, could those come along and not be relevant? Is that the concern, that we might develop policy and and we we wouldn't be able to integrate that into the planning that that occurs in the future?
Yeah, I'm thinking back to having to deal with applications that came through under the, where the old those hide in some. And um so I'm getting coaching on how to speak into the microphone as well, but the um, yeah, yeah, I'd just like to to understand how that's um, at what point we're locked into which policies we're we're applying to the to the project. Um, you know, maybe we're going to see uh it prudent to accelerate some climate policy, and will that be able to be, you know, injected into the process throughout, or are we dealing with the lay of land today, or I don't, that's not clear to me at this point.
Okay, yeah, no, fair enough. So um, so this process is is creating a suburbia plan, um which would be an OCP uh OCP um schedule. Um, when the development is proposed, people, uh the the applicant will come in for a rezoning uh application. Uh, and at that point, um, the the rezoning application will need to be aligned or consistent with the OCP. So the uh, the separate plan will likely say, in this area, um, we support this level of density, and in this area, we support this level of density. So um, it couldn't be out of alignment with the separate plan. You couldn't have a proposal that was uh much more dense than the OCP without changing the OCP. Uh, but as long as it's in general aligned with the OCP, um, it is still a rezoning application. And so council has full discretion at that point, as they do with every rezoning application um to uh accept or or not accept those rezoning applications. In general, the concept is that we create a separate plan that council and the community is supportive of, and so those rezoning applications then are, have have a um don't fi- uh run into all kinds of challenges um getting approved, because they're aligned with the OCP. But um if elements, if there are new policies developed in the OCP or um other elements that um, you know, related to climate change, for example, uh, there isn't anything that would preclude council from saying, hey, we we've got these expectations and they need to be considered and addressed. Um, with with regards to steep slope, um, yes, there there, we, you know, we want to develop a steep slope uh DPA. If the DPA gets um adopted uh between when a separate plan or during the separate planning process, before rezoning application comes in, um, when that DPA is adopted, we will have the opportunity to decide where it will apply. And so, you know, we we may apply it to this property. Um, but at the same time, um, as part of this applicant, the separate planning process, we are engaging in uh steep slopes um uh analysis to try and come up with appropriate um um uh policy related how to address those steep slopes. So it may be that the the policy that's created in the separate planning is is sufficient and appropriate. Uh, it may be that the um, the a new s- steep slope DPA uh has additional items that we want to have addressed. And um when we adopt that, we would have the opportunity to decide where it applies and where it doesn't. Um, so because it's a OCP application, um, new policy, uh, we have the option, opportunity to say it applies or it does not um in the rezoning processes that come later, uh and that will essentially council retains discretion on that.
Please, Conqueror Herbert. Thank you. Um, my my other question is, with this developer-led um process that does affect just one parcel, makes it quite different from the previous process of being involved in it. One of my concerns as reading over is, at what, I want to make sure that we're um, that the process is open to that feedback and true that involved level, and doesn't turn into um marketing of said development until it's appropriate to to do so. And how, and that's maybe a tone thing um or truly being open to to listening. And I I wonder if staff had any um concerns around that, or how how that's, how that um sort of nuanced piece of it is uh is handled, when it is a developer-led um process, and the outcome of the process is yet unknown.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, it's a good question. Um, I, you know, my impression from the uh uh initial conversation with the applicant and their commitment to the uh a robust planning process um does uh, you know, they they've they've hired a consultant that is, you know, especially, they actually have two uh planning consultant and an engagement consultant that are specialists in engagement on these types of projects. Uh, and so I I do feel like they are, um, they recognize and have highlighted that ultimately, council has full discretion on whether or not this plan is is adopted. Um, and so I I, the, you know, the the discussion has um very much focused on their commitment to running a good planning process, getting engagement with the community, and coming with a plan that can be supported by the community and council. Um, and so at this point, I I don't feel like their staff doesn't have a, you know, significant concerns uh around that topic. Um, you know, ultimately, as I said, it does come down to council discretion, and because there are multiple check-in points along the way, council has the option to provide at any point feedback um regarding whether or not they feel the engagement is appropriate or has challenges. And um, you know, there are multiple points that uh we could, uh if their concerns, course correct, and try and um change tone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Further questions, council? Counselor Pedigum?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so a couple of things, um, just following on the neighbor's question about um climate action. You know, I think we've got a report later today about how we're reducing our corporate emissions. We know we have a community goal of a forty-five percent reduction. Our neighborhood plans seem to all involve inevitably emissions increases. And we've been working hard and I think taking good steps to slow the magnitude of those increases compared to the past, but it still represents an increase. So do we have an understanding of how much we can afford to increase emissions from this development or development in general? And then with that number, the community can kind of have some sense of, we're okay of allocating, you know, ten percent of that increase to this development, and we'll still hit our forty-five percent target. Like, how do we gain an understanding of how much we can grow emissions with this development?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, that is a, that is a good question. Um, I I can't say that it's one that we have tackled or have um an answer for at this point. Um, I can certainly reach out to our um, our manager of climate change or director, uh Ian, um and ask him uh if if there has been consideration of that. I I think what you're essentially talking about is is having like a a carbon budget, essentially, like we've got so much carbon that we can produce, and how do we address that or allocate that across development? And um, that that sounds, that that seems like quite a um, a rational and and appropriate approach. But I I don't believe it's one that we've tackled at this point. Um, and so I don't believe that we have uh an ability to um to quantify uh those um carbon impacts within the scope of what we we feel is appropriate to allow over the entire community.
Okay, thanks. I'll maybe come back to that, my comments. Um, wondering in terms of the feedback, like unlike uh Loggers East, um, there is no neighborhood where this neighborhood plan is is proposed. Um, so I'm wondering, have we set any expectations for ourselves or for the the um developer around whose input is more important or or where it comes? Because, you know, it could be uh the developer or neighboring properties looking for a lucrative short-term exit. It might be people outside of Squamish who want to move there, that want to drive this. Maybe people in the community would like to move there, and those may be conflicting perspectives. So how do we, do we have any idea of how we want to prioritize that, those different groups? And there could be other ways to slice the the input.
Yeah, through the chair, absolutely. So that that is something that did come up. I I would say this is a theme that came up quite clearly. Um, I think it was back in April when council talked about neighborhood planning i- in in general. I think it has a follow-up to Loggers East. And so we have tried to, staff, the staff has worked with the applicant, and I would say the applicant has been very receptive to to the input that we've provided on this topic. Um, we have tried to um strategize on how to address just that. Because, yes, there there is, there could be a very big difference between what people that, you know, live in a neighborhood or write addition to a neighborhood, um, what their needs are versus what the entire community needs. Um, and and that's, that's going to be, I think, a um, an ongoing um uh point of consideration across all of our neighborhood planning issues, right? It's very common that there's, there may be some differences in in desires and needs um across different groups, and and, you know, where people are living and located has a big impact on that. So, and if you look in the uh in engagement plan, we've tried to 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 take the step to, um, and this is, you know, in in working with the applicant um and having uh, you you know, our or providing input. Um, we've tried to create a set of categories across the entire engagement program um that represent both the people who live in the area and adjacent, but also represent the broader community. So, you know, we're we're looking at trying to find ways to reach out to Squamish tenants, um to underhouse Squamish residents, environmental advocates, groups um that may have interests that might not be represented by the um, the people immediately in the area. Um, and, you know, I think our our efforts to bring those in will hopefully generate commentary that um represents a diverse range of perspectives, not just people right right next to the property. Um, in terms of how that is weighed and balanced, um, you know, that that is a bit of the art of planning discussion, and will come down to, you know, uh, the developer's interests, the uh staff's commentary, and how council responds to it. So at at this point, um, yeah, I think if you, if you take a look the, in the um engagement plan, it is color-coded um by uh whether groups are directly related, groups that may support or engage neighborhood residents as the, you know, that may be engaged in the future. Um, and that uh there's a a booster group that's colored purple, groups that may take an interest in the planning process as a local organization or resident. We've tried to categorize these groups by, you know, kind of their their proximity, or or not the proximity, but they're they're kind of the closeness to the issues. Um, but ultimately, we are trying to generate that discussion and then balance it as we move forward. I can't say that there's a um, like a formula that we'll use to to show, you know, to say, this is how much uh this group versus, you know, locals will will have in the conversation, but they're all, we've tried to create a plan that where they're all going to be engaged in the process, and we get those various perspectives.
Okay, thanks. Uh, and then my last question, uh, I think the, it's in this report where the point is, as they're speaking to Fortis about their proposed pipeline. Uh, I'm wondering if we are engaging Fortis on that. As I understand it, um, they sort of get their permits and do their plans based on what's there now, and what's there now actually predates even the Loggers East plan. And now we have possibly two neighborhoods, which, given our approach to development, focus on transit and so on, might be quite dense. Um, so how how are we talking to Fortis and the EAO and making sure they're thinking about and planning the the actual density that we have either now approved or in the works? My understanding is there may not be setback regulations in Canada, but their operating pressures, pipeline design, which might require them redoing the pipeline if we do the building we want to do. How do we align those things? And and make sure that those, you know, the EAO and Fortis and so on are taking these things into consideration?
Uh, yeah, thank you through the chair. So we don't have a, um, at this point, we've highlighted that Fortis is is a group that needs to be engaged in the process. Um, certainly, the applicant is in, is engaged with Fortis through through discussion regarding, you know, the work that's being proposed on their property. But we don't have a um, a formal structure that's been uh identified or laid out in terms of how that input is going to be incorporated. Uh, I can say because they're on the engagement plan, that certainly we're going to um look towards uh Fortis's uh input on on those types of issues. But um, I can't say that it's formally laid out at this time. Okay, how that works.
All right, thank you.
I can't hear you, but I
Yes.
I think the feedback's gone, yes. Um, thank you, through the chair. Uh, just a few simple questions. I'm curious about the online engagement platform, and if that we envision that being the same as the one that we discussed using for the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan, um recognizing that these are kind of one district-led, one developer-led. Um, but are we looking for consistency across those processes uh in terms of engagement platform?
Through the chair, uh, thank you. Yes, um, another good question. Um, this has been a topic of discussion with the applicant. Um, we did highlight, so so when we were kind of going through discussion that would uh result in this um updated engagement plan, um, staff did highlight that we were um bringing, you know, we had an RFP out at that point to bring on a new program, uh a new platform. I I believe that still has not been finalized, although I think that we're getting close to finalizing that engagement platform. Um, and we suggested, staff suggested to the applicant that uh it would be appropriate to to use a a similar program, or perhaps the same program or platform, once it was chosen. Um, what uh the applicant highlighted is that uh those platforms tend to work quite well for an organization such as ours, that has kind of a broad range of projects that might live on that platform, but the the cost for an individual project of of this type is quite significant. And so it would be um a onerous to um uh subscribe to one of these services for an individual project. That that was uh the response that they provided. So um in in lieu of having, uh, which would be ideal if we could have all the same kind of platform and project. In lieu of that, um, we've discussed the elements that we're intending and hoping to uh reside on the platform that we're going to use. And um the applicant has agreed to uh um incorporate, and they are incorporating to the plan some of the uh aspects that I think are kind of key elements of the one we're going to use, for example, in the Garibaldi Estates program, where we can track the conversation. Um, people can look back and see what issues were raised, um, what was heard, and how we've responded to it. And so that is written right into the engagement strategy. I think that was one of the key elements that we were hoping to achieve with the um whatever platform we come up with, and um the applicant has agreed to um replicate something, not through the platform, but through um the websites, kind of uh, however they structure their website, they're going to try and bring that element in to have that kind of ongoing dialogue highlighted and how the district responds to it. So um perhaps uh not the ideal by having the exact same um uh engagement strategy. I think that is one of the realities of having um a a several applying process led by the developer, um that it probably won't have the same consistency. But um I think we can achieve the goals of of that we're trying to use the platform for, uh and they are receptive to.
That's great, thank you. Um, and then my other question was just around the backfill for staff time um and recognizing that there is still some negotiation going on there, um but this is kicking off quite quickly. Um, so just curious, knowing how it can sometimes take a while to hire for backfill capacity, uh how staff envision kind of that timing working out, um and how we make sure we don't drop any of the many balls that we have in the air.
Yeah, and I I will um uh highlight that I am not actually involved in those conversations. That is something that Jonas uh is involved with. He is on vacation. I am acting for him at the moment. Uh, so my understanding is that um the intention is to have that backfill um come into play uh closer to the end of the year. Um, at this, this point, the time uh requirement is considered to be somewhat less, and um so that backfill isn't considered to be um critical at this point, but that it is being, and the applicant has agreed um in the the last emails I saw, that they were supportive of continuing with the program as proposed um to support that staff capacity, and that that would come into play as we um get closer to the end of the year.
Further questions, Councilor Stoner?
We can't hear Counselor Anderson.
It's by telephone, Counselor. If you just indicate if you have any questions for Mr. Gunn.
I have no question, thank you.
Thank you. My own questions have already been asked, so uh why don't we proceed to a final round of comments? Uh, any comments, council? Any comments, counsel? Mayor Elliott?
I just want to move the recommendations so that the comments are captured within that.
Mayor Elliott, thank you. Second by Counselor Herford.
I was really pleased with this plan. I think it responds to the feedback we provided earlier this spring. I'm glad to see the alignment around while not using the same engagement platform, at least understanding that that people will see what's been said and how it's been responded to and that will be tracked. I think staff have addressed the access issues. Well, I think that everyone's aware that will be the tricky part of this conversation going forward. And really, the biggest addition to me is clarifying our intention around the climate emergency and what we mean by considering climate impacts. And I believe that should be very clearly spelled out by step six when options are presented to the community. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner?
I agree. I appreciate the revised plan and I think that this is definitely stronger in response to a lot of the feedback that we initially had. I will say that I think especially in line with some of Counselor Herford's questions, it'll be important to communicate the process here and how just generally neighborhood planning fits in with respect to zoning versus development permits. There's already, I think, a fair bit of concern and communication in the community around what this actually means. And so wherever we can be as clear as possible about the end goals of neighborhood planning and how that fits into other planning processes, I think will be a good learning and education touchpoint for our community as well. But other than that, I am willing to support the motion and look forward to this process panning out over multiple years. Thanks.
Counselor Reese?
Thank you. And I'm generally supportive of the direction that staff is going. And I think, you know, out of my questions, my, one of my key concerns for me, and I think maybe for the wider community will be the connectivity that this might provide for the Valley Cliff area, for example. The other alternate route to the highway, which is becoming a bit of a theme of mine now and getting sort of frontage roads or alternate routes and we have government road on one side. But we don't have much on the other side of the highway to connect our neighborhoods without going on the highway and the issues that that sometimes raises. And and when I look at these plans, I don't want to get into the detail of the planning. But the engagement, I think, is is important to reflect that this is for me is is a it's not a 10 year plan, it's a 50 year plan. And, you know, where do we think we might be in 50 years if we can envision that? And how do will people get around our community and and the connections for active transportation and transit and so forth? So I think that's an important part of the engagement going forward and trying to get the community to buy into that. For me, that's one of the positives of this proposal is is the opportunities for connectivity that it might provide. And the engagement with the nation is is, as we've highlighted, is is obviously critical for these connections. And and the question, as the mayor says, that's one of the tricky parts. And then one of the questions is who builds what road when? And and I think that's something that we'll just have to work out and see where that ends up. But generally supportive of the direction this is going and look forward to seeing it proceed. Thank you.
Counselor Peddingill?
Yeah, thanks. A couple of comments. Seen some questions. I've seen some questions from people about, you know, why are we doing neighborhood planning here? This is not a developed area. We're refusing to accept considering developments in other areas. So what's going on? And I think this is, it's important to make it clear, this is within our growth management boundary. That was part of a wide community discussion. And part of our consideration about why we do and don't develop right now in different places is we knew that this place was in our community management or our growth management boundary was going to be developed. And so it played into our decisions about where we do and don't accept development. And so I think that's important to to highlight why we are talking about this parcel. I do think, you know, I'm not clear how we can assess we're on target with our broader community climate action plan without understanding the impact that new development has. And even if it's just across a community, we can increase emissions by 20 tons with new development. At least that can play into it. We can have that sort of discussion as we're looking at what's proposed here. And it may be very rough numbers, but I think if we can understand the impact our development is having, because these are possibly large developments. Again, I don't think we can know we're on track at all with our CCAP and maybe that needs to come back as as a separate budget piece for for the next budget cycle or something. But for me, I think that is a critical gap we have to address if we plan to hit the targets we've set for ourselves. But I'll admit I've been, and I think I've mentioned it before, but feeling a lot of climate anxiety lately with the ocean fires and forest fires and everything. That that forest pipeline is four times the size of that Eye of Sauron Ocean Gas Pipeline. And so I'm feeling very anxious about that. And maybe this is more of a note to the proponent as they're talking to Fordus, but closer this pop, this pipeline gets to development, proposed development, the less inclined I am to improve that, approve that development. I just you know, take it for what it's worth, but I have a great deal of concern about how close we're putting this infrastructure to to people. And then the final thing is, I do think, and it's maybe a little bit separate from this plan, but we maybe do need a conversation about who should be driving the neighborhood plans in. And I appreciate the detail about what groups will be providing feedback, but you know, in theory, a bunch of people in Vancouver might absolutely love to move into this neighborhood and maybe they should be the ones providing a lot of the feedback if they're going to be the ones that are living here. Or maybe it is just the people that live next door. And I don't know what the right answer is. And obviously, it's not an easy question, but maybe for neighborhood planning in general, we should be giving a bit more thought to that. So it's not sort of tied in the heat of the moment to a specific development when we're trying to have that conversation about what feedback is more important. So maybe just something to think about. Other than that, I am actually very impressed with the the detail and the amount of feedback and the checkpoints in this plan. It seems to be a very robust plan. It is a bit of a concern that it's developer led, but I can also see the benefits to that. And as it is, though, I am very appreciative of the amount of of work and attention to community input to this. And so I think that's great. Thank you.
Are there comments, counsel? Counselor Herford?
Okay, thank you. I'm support this draft. I appreciate all the so far. I do, there, I was concerned around understanding the impact of development on our community climate action plans. And seeing as that plan has been directing you know, budget spends affected on one end, and then on the other end, we're continuing to develop our community. I think it's important to understand that. I don't know that we I don't think it's appropriate to hold this one entirely accountable for that. But I think there's definitely some further understanding to be to be had there. So I think it's I'd like to see that addressed at some opportunity. I also think I'm concerned with the groups providing, providing feedback. And I think some of us have attended some public hearings that have that maybe are contain entirely contractors involved in the process or involved in the represented in these. That, Mr. Gunn, my microphone is it sounds glitchy.
Counselor French is on the phone line with us. Counselor French, do you have any comments to add?
Just say that I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Clear comments. I'll just add myself. I believe that staff has heard clearly that we're all interested to see a more clear application of a climate action lens to the planning process. We have also heard about the need for a clear process and clear goals for that process and its plan outcomes for the public. And I would agree with Counselor Stoner that there's a lot of questions that indicate that orientation will be an important matter ongoing. It will be important for to land and smart growth planning to find our way towards placing a neighborhood plan in the context of the wider community. In fact, smart growth planning is not only a community wide, a neighborhood issue, but it's a regional issue. And so there's to putting these in context, and that will be an issue for this planning process as well. The stakeholder engagement plan to me looks very thorough and it reflects the fact that we have
You're cutting out Counselor Anderson. We can only hear half of what you're saying. We can't hear you at all at the moment.
I think I'm okay now. We're just happy experiencing tech. Right, so I'll just reiterate my last point, that the stakeholder engagement plan seems to me to reflect the fact that we have not only a proponent, but districts who are acquainted with the community. And this is a very thorough identification of potential stakeholders. Hold there. The significant in future that isn't named there, and I'll just mention it briefly, is the Squamish Canyon Project. And as that unfolds, it may be added to the so with ask if a vote in favor of the the North Crofted Neighborhood Planning?
We can't hear the call to question.
All in. Receive the North Plan Engagement Process Staff Report. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Scott? Counselor Peddingill, do you have a question?
Yeah, I could sort of make out that you were calling the motion, but I, we couldn't hear you even on the second time.
Thank you for alerting us. We see the green lights sort of flicker on our headphones here, but it should be stable now. I trust you can hear me clearly now, Counselor Peddingill. Very good. I'll call the question again. Are there any or all in favor of the motion to receive the North Crofted Neighborhood Plan Engagement Process Staff Report? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I will take a short recess at this time. Five minutes should do it so we can do a check in on our, thank you. And the chair calling the meeting back to order. Acting Mayor Eric Anderson and the chair calling the meeting back to order. We have Ms. Dora Gunn up to give her presentation on Active and Safe Roots to School Program update. Please proceed, Ms. Dora.
Thank you. I'm Dora Gunn, a transportation planner with the District of Squamish. We also have Beth Herford with us today. Beth is a community transportation consultant with Urban Systems. She's managed the Active and Safe Roots to School Program this past year. So I'm going to pass it over to Beth now to get us started with the presentation.
Thank you, Dora. Thanks for the introduction and thank you to Mayor and Council for having me here this morning to present to you. I will share my content, so please bear with me for a moment. Okay, and with head nods, could you confirm you can see this? Great, thank you. So as Dora mentioned, I will be presenting for this year's Active and Safe Roots to School Program update. I'll walk through a little bit of background and context to get everybody reacquainted with the program as it existed previously and as it looks today. We'll provide a few updates as far as what we've heard through the monitoring as part of the 2015 and 16 programs and the 2020 21 program. We'll talk about implementation progress and report back on some of the advances the district has made alongside partners in the program. And then we'll talk a little bit around the mapping updates, which tie to implementation of the infrastructure improvements. And we'll look towards this year's program. Then we'll leave some time for discussion. The presentation today will be quite brief to allow for time for discussion. So previously, so everyone understands the process. The the process occurs in three phases. Generally, we start by understanding the challenges and opportunities that each of the schools present. That relates both to kind of travel patterns and barriers as well as safety concerns for transportation throughout the community, usually within a particular school catchment. Then we work to develop a school travel action plan to address the barriers and encourage active transportation, of course, making safety improvement recommendations throughout that process. And the the third phase, which is ultimately an ongoing phase, is the implementation and tracking progress. The implementation and tracking progress is primarily what we'll be talking about today for the previous program. And we'll go through the whole process for the 2020 2021 schools. A little bit of background, the program launched for the District of Squamish in 2015. So the 2015 16 school year saw three of the public elementary schools participating. Those were Garibaldi Highlands, Squamish and Memquam. And then in 2016 17, Bracknell Elementary, Squamish and Squamish Schools. Throughout that period, there was some overlap with the active transportation plan development. And those processes were complementary to one another. In 2020 2021, where we are now, the program was undergone with Squamish Waldorf and the Scourge Montessori Schools, both of which are independent schools within the district. So for the previous schools, we'll talk a little bit around our monitoring. We have two kind of methods for gathering data within schools. In 2015 and 2016, both, or sorry, all six schools, we should say collectively, do have baseline data through online family surveys. At the time, they were paper surveys, but they've been conducted online for the 2020 21 schools. So apologies for that reference. They also completed classroom hands up surveys, which asks students each day how they got to school. Generally, when we compare baseline results from the family or household surveys to the hands up surveys, they do align quite well. And today, based on responses, we've, we are demonstrating the two school results from Valley Cliff Elementary. So you'll see that in 2016, so Valley Cliff participated 2016. There's about a 33% active mode share on trips to school. And in the 2021 results, we see about 55% active mode share to school. And similar trends showing return trips, we've chosen to show two school trips here just for simplicity. But what we typically see in these results is that the from school mode share tends to be more active with parents dropping students off on the way to school and those students finding their own way on the return trip, although the shift isn't significant. So for Squamish Elementary, you'll see that in Valley Cliff, we saw an increase in active transportation share. And for Squamish Elementary, we actually saw slight or 11% decrease. Important to note here that Squamish Elementary is a school with term programming. And also, I think it's really critical to understand that schools over the years are quite fluid in their characteristics, depending on the students, the parents, parent involvement administrators, and of course, infrastructure improvements within the catchment areas. We also wanted to touch base again with the stakeholders who had been involved previously. So you see here a list of the invited participants. We had members of staff from District of Squamish from various departments, School District 48, the School District 48, the Squamish Child Society, BC Transit, ICBC, and RCMP, and then representatives from each school. We also extended invites to Vancouver Coastal Health as part of their Healthy Built Environments team, and Vancouver Coastal Health was excited to participate, but was unable this year due to other health priorities. So we generally recommend identify ease of school travel planning, some communities five, some four, but we did an inventory of the actions that were identified through the previous school travel action plans to get an idea of how that was split. You'll see here that the majority of actions identified within these plans do fall within engineering. We also have a few around enforcement, education, and engagement encouragement. The engagement encouragement E, we'll call it one, and education tend to be identified for other, other champions to lead. And I'll speak a little bit more about that in our next slide here. So back to the, the kind of four Es, we've also taken the actions that were identified to champions, and what we're showing you here is how that is split. So the action plans are really meant to be, you know, undertaken or addressed, you know, through some partnerships and with different champions depending on the organization. And you can see that we've got for the District of Squamish, you know, 69% of those actions in, falling to, to engineering and others to bylaw. So we've got some responsibility here for School District 48, RCMP, school admin and PAC themselves, and then other organizations, tend to be kind of the ICBC or other, other kind of partners in the province. So looking at those items that we've identified specifically for the District of Squamish to champion or to lead, you can see this is the progress, so the, you know, the most clear here is 54% of those items have been completed, and there are others that are in various stages of, of either being pursued or on hold or not seen to be feasible once the action plans have been, you know, processed and well-understood by staff. I'm going to hand it over now to Ms. Gunn, if you want to speak to the implementation examples we've got here.
Great, thanks, Beth. So I think most people are familiar with some of the past actions that the district and other stakeholders have completed under this program, but I just wanted to show a few examples for those watching. So starting at the left, top left and moving clockwise, we have the multi-use path between Howson Secondary and Ecall Squamish Elementary. The sidewalk north of Mamquam Elementary is the next one.
We lost the presentation.
Oh, apologies.
I will pull it up once again, not sure what happened there.
All right, I think we're back. Maybe I'll just start from the beginning again. So the first, I'm going to go clockwise, starting at the top left, so the first photo is the multi-use path between Howson Secondary and Ecall Squamish Elementary. Next photo is the sidewalk north of Mamquam Elementary. The third photo is Officer Scareco, but also represents all the enforcement work that the RCMP does in the school zones throughout the year. Below that is the new school zone signage that we implemented a couple of years ago, larger signage with extended school zone hours. And then lastly is a neighborhood way, a 30-kilometer shared road zone in Brackendale. Thank you. And so this table shows the projects that we're working on currently. These are all new since my last update to council. It shows projects only that are underway right now, it doesn't include things that we might, other products we might be going to do in 2022. So I'll just quickly go through this list. We've been doing concept designs and public engagement for Highlands Way North in the Perth Drive area. We are expecting to release a summary of the survey in the coming month, and then we'll figure out timing for construction after that. We're also looking at improving bike connectivity on Skyline Drive. We're somewhat limited in the road right-of-way area that we have there, but we do think we can make some improvements, so we're looking at design right now, and then we'll be implementing that in 2022. We are also working on two corridor trail lighting projects this year, so Mamquam Road to Mamquam Bridge and Finch to Adventure Centre. These are planned to be built this year, and once finished, they will, the corridor trail will be largely lit, like the whole distance of it, which is a great milestone for us. There'll be a few slightly dark spots. On Mamquam Road, underway right now is the active transportation improvements, so that'll be bike facilities on both sides plus a new section of sidewalk on the north side. That's in construction now, it's expected to be completed early fall. We're also looking at design of the Garibaldi-Tantalus intersection, which has come up in several of the school travel planning processes. So we are looking to hopefully tender that work later this year with construction starting in 2022. A smaller project, but still important, is the Pia Road and Pitlochri Way intersection. We're looking to extend sidewalks there and create a crosswalk, design is underway currently and in construction this year. And then lastly, we're looking at the Talus and Dowood intersection. We're looking to improve pedestrian connectivity there, as well as pick to drive to five locations. So we're looking at design right now, as well as traffic counts with construction in 2022. And I should also add that we do continue to work with the schools every September to promote the best routes maps, as well as do some communications to the public about, reminding them that the school zones are back in effect. We also do the Go By Bike Weeks, and this year we're hoping to introduce a new program called Everyone Rides, grades four or five, which is a partnership between Hub Cycling and the province of BC, so we'll just introduce that to one or two schools this year, hopefully, and then maybe more schools in the future. And I'll pass it back to Beth now.
Thank you, Dora. So Dora made mention briefly of the best routes maps. Each of the schools that participated previously, and as well as the current schools, was provided with a best routes map. And the maps built on, on the infrastructure as it existed at the time, so several of these maps, considering they had been drafted in 2015 through 2017, did have some changes to be made, those include the RFBs or the, what might be called the pedestrian flashing beacons, as well as new sidewalks, new crosswalks, and other improvements along the route to school. So we have also taken these maps and, and updated them, updated them, they're in draft form currently. Will be sent out to school administrators for review before being circulated for the return to school. As a reminder, the maps can be found on the district website, and we will update, of course, the maps on the website once they're finalized for each school. So now we'll look towards the, the current schools. We began the process with both Skyridge-Montessori and Squamish-Waldorf in October of 2020. We, we did a bit of, you know, similar process, but it was a little more, we adapted throughout, considering some of the engagement challenges throughout this school year, and also capacity of administrators, given the other challenges throughout the year. So we, we did the site visits at peak periods, peak student arrival and student departure, to have an understanding of traffic flow or other congestion-based challenges, as well as student safety. We did the online household survey, and I mentioned that previously lots of those have been completed in hard copy. We also provided hard copy to, to a school by request. However, the majority of responses came through the online effort. We conducted the hands-up classroom surveys and did a parent advisory council meetings in different formats. And so for, for Skyridge-Montessori, for instance, they hosted regular meetings via Zoom, so we attended virtually, whereas Squamish-Waldorf was still hosting very small, what they call pick meetings, parent involvement committee meetings in person. So we're able, we were able to attend that way and communicated through other means with them. We also did a virtual walkabout with Skyridge-Montessori via Zoom, and for Squamish-Waldorf, at that point, we, we were not advised to be meeting in person, so we prepared a package of materials for classrooms to actually lead the walkabouts themselves, to, to draw on maps and provide input directly from students, so we'd like to thank the school for working with us to, to develop those, those materials, and also to have the teachers host those sessions. We then kind of looked towards the, the program, the, the action plan development, which we used all the inputs to, to inform, and have since been working on draft best routes maps. As a reminder, the, the two schools are independent schools at either end of the community. These schools have, do not have traditional school catchments, and we see that through the results in active mode share. There's, you know, significantly longer distances traveled to have students arrive at these schools with, you know, more than 60%, traveling more than three kilometers to arrive at school each day, of course, for the return trip. Because of this spread, we also saw identified locations of concern throughout the community, so whereas previous schools, we were able to really focus on the catchment for each school, these concerns really did kind of infiltrate the, the entire community. However, many of the items and locations did correspond with locations of concern from the public schools, and we were really able to make sure that the, the approach were consistent using, for instance, some of the action items from Mamquam Elementary to help inform Skyridge, and, and as Dora mentioned, you know, several of the locations of concern, for instance, Garibaldi Way, Tantalus, or Garibaldi Way, Highway 99, now corroded Highway 99, understanding those are also ministry intersections, but we recognize that those are areas of concern, although, you know, a further distance from, from each of these schools. So you, you will see here, I've already kind of mentioned further distances traveled, and it's quite clear in the, in the data here that majority of families are driving their students to school. You can see for Waldorf that there is a small group of students that will return home using public transit, there is a bus stop outside the school on Westway, so it's great to see, and that's a great opportunity for the school to, to build that up a little bit with potentially drop-off at a Chieftain Centre or a route along the way. So it's something that we have suggested to them, particularly given the progress made in kind of youth travel for transit within the community. And, you know, very, very similar results here as far as mode share for, for both schools. We also, the maps that you can see here are, we've, we've been working on them kind of throughout the last few weeks, so they are a little bit different from what's in the staff report for council. But we worked, you know, talked to the schools to find out what we could do as far as encouraging students to walk. The alignment of the best routes, you can see within the catchments mostly, or at least for the Waldorf school, align with those routes for Valley Cliff Elementary, ensuring that we can focus our efforts on these, these recommended best routes. We also wanted to take a bit of a, a different approach to ensure that students can be dropped off in areas just beyond the school, and building on kind of their educational philosophies, encourage the independence of traveling to school from the alternate drop-off locations, and have looked towards kind of valuing the, the more nature routes or adventure routes, as we've called them. And the, the Skyridge map has been shared with the, with the parent group, and is, of course, still kind of being finalized, but it was an approach that we thought would be a little unique for your particular, you know, community, given the recreational nature and, and the schools, so a work in progress, but a way that we were able to kind of adapt without having those traditional catchments. So we also produced a school travel plan for each of the, each of the schools, and I'll provide a, just, you know, a example of an action from each. For example, and Dora mentioned this, we have learned, and the school is actually great in leading kind of a walking school bus from the intersection of Dowood and Tantalus Road up the hill for their students. So currently, there is an informal alternate drop-off location here, but we have made some recommendations to improve the safety of this location and the general functionality for active transportation users. For, for Waldorf, one of the locations, a primary locations of concern was the intersection at Westway, close to what most would recognize as the Valley Cliff General Store. The, you know, request was that from parents that they really wanted to see a flashing beacon at this particular location. Beacons aren't typically installed in locations where we have a stop control, which you can see here as a four-way stop. So we've made other recommendations around narrowing the pedestrian crossing area, potentially looking at improving some, some lighting, and just generally improving the visibility of students and, and helping to lower vehicle speeds through this intersection. Onwards, we've asked parents throughout the, for the independent schools, if they supported the ongoing efforts, and 95% respondents said that they did, so that is a good news story. There we go, that brings us up to our opportunity for discussion. I'm here to field any questions and look forward to hearing from you, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert and Ms. Gunn, council, any questions? I see councillor Race's hand, councillor Race.
Thank you, and it's just with respect to the, the Perth. Am I getting an echo again? It's with respect to the Perth Drive Highlands Way issue, and I'm curious if we will be in a position to bring that to budget in 2022 for possible completion in 2022.
To the Chair, I guess it is my goal to have some parts of that in the budget for 2022. We're hoping to do a bit of work yet this year in that area, it'll be a small project, and then something larger next year. As to which exact, so if we wanted to do all of the options that we asked the public for feedback on, it's quite, that's quite a large series of projects, so we can't do them all in this timeframe, but we will have something this year and something next year, I'm just not sure exactly which parts yet.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Further questions, council, councillor Pedding.
Yeah, just in terms of the public schools, do, are, are students required to attend within their catchment, or does the board have any policies to encourage attendance within a catchment? Just sort of wondering what that relationship is between the school and the catchment.
I can try to answer that, but I may not get it exactly right. My understanding is that students are encouraged to attend within their catchment if that works for them, that you can apply to attend outside your catchment, but you have to then be approved to do that. And then there are programs of choice, like the French immersion program where there is, so the community is kind of divided into two with the two French immersion programs, and typically people apply to the one in their general area, and again, have to be approved to get into that program.
Further questions, council? Councillor Stoner.
Thank you, to the Chair, thanks for a great presentation. And a few questions. I noticed that in the Safe Roots to School Action Plan for the Montessori School, all the education awareness actions are all listed as future timeline. And I'm just curious if, why that wasn't able to be more refined?
I think I'll, I'll field that one, so it's, it's currently draft. Edits such as that are the more minor that we want to talk to the school about and find out the level of comfort as far as current actions, we'll, we'll be updating. The, however, we should, you know, highlight that Skyridge-Montessori is already doing, you know, really great things at their school, so realistically, many of those actions are current, or we could maybe call them in planning. But yeah, some of those items will, will be updated and made more clear.
That's great. And then there was some discussion around the pedestrian islands at Highway 99 and Garibaldi Way intersection being too small, and it was timely, I was just driving home yesterday, and there was a family with a trailer and two kids, and the mom had a dog, and it was scary to watch. So I'm just curious what process there is to engage MOTI on that, it's obviously, it's provincial jurisdiction, and so just wondering if staff can speak to what likelihood we might have in terms of the provincial engagement there.
Excuse me, I can speak to that through the Chair. So we are actually working with MOTI right now on one of the islands at Mamquam and the highway. We are hoping to make improvements to that, it's the north island on the east side as part of the work we're doing on Mamquam right now, so we have a new proposed design for that one island, and we are working with them currently to see if they will be willing to approve it. It is different than anything else we've seen them, or that, as far as we're aware, they have not approved anything like this anywhere else in BC. So this will be a first, but there's other firsts that they have done elsewhere too, like in Victoria, they actually eliminated the islands entirely in one location. So there's, there's the possibility that they could do it, given that they, they make changes elsewhere, so we're hoping, and we should know. So we're hoping and we should know this year.
Okay, that's great. And then I had one final question just around the survey structure. And I noticed that scootering and sporting were always differentiated from biking. And I'm just curious why that is and if they're expected to be in the bike lane or on the sidewalk, or if the treatment to support skate, skateboarding and scootering is different than biking, or if it's all just considered rolling.
Yeah, I mean, I can feel that. We we see in different municipalities, scootering and skateboarding being hugely popular, a much higher travel mode than than cycling. As far as infrastructure goes, students tend to travel on the sidewalk. So it's it's not so much around the infrastructure being used. It's really just a general understanding of how students are getting to school. And a lot of that, the importance of understanding that is also the facilities for their end of trip. Is there somewhere safe to lock up a scooter or a skateboard? They're more difficult to store outside securely. A lot of student, a lot of schools have difficulty storing them, and there are different ways of doing that. So the the question really is just more for understanding active modes and the split between the active modes, not so much the use of the infrastructure and arriving at the destination.
Thank you.
Mary Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that stood out with the Sky Ridge map was how we named the routes, like the everyday hill climb and the bike from Rockdale. And I'm wondering if there's things that we learned from that engagement that we could apply to the schools of choice. So stop miss. It calls Squamish Elementary and all their.
Yeah, I think, yes, to the Chair, that's a great opportunity and maybe something that can be taken back to the principles when we do circulate the updated maps. It hasn't been something that has come up in discussion since, as far as, if I understand correctly, applying some of the the terminology or the approach from the independent schools onto the the neighboring public schools.
Yeah, just because you have kids coming from so far.
Yeah.
From all over the district. So identifying those fun routes or those shared routes for the public schools that are schools of choice could also be be helpful. My other question is that we did the the midline signs for the school zones. And those seem to work for a while. Lots of people, I think, ran over them. So some of them went missing. But I still see speed as an issue. And are there any other best practices out there? Like, should the the fog lines be painted, you know, red in school zones? Or just something that is a constant visual clue that you're in a thirty zone? And it it just seems to be an ongoing problem. And we have encouraged the police to be there as often as possible and give out tickets. And but, yeah, I'm wondering if there's any other best practices we could follow.
To the Chair, I can speak to the central line signs first, and maybe I'll pass it over to Beth if you have any other ideas. So central line signs have been well loved and well hated both during their time, probably more well loved. And we are, we've gone through a lot of them. They, we had to keep replacing them. And so we're actually reviewing that program this summer to decide whether to order a whole bunch more and have them installed for September or whether to try something different. So that decision has not been made, but we will, engineering will be working with Public Works to make that decision shortly. One alternative that we have considered is is painting the slow school zone in large writing in the school zone on the asphalt. So that's a possibility that we did used to have that in place in the past and then decided not to repaint those when we installed the central line signs. So we could go back to that. It does require repainting regularly, so there is some cost. But so that's where the center lines, perhaps I will turn it over to Beth if you have any other ideas.
Thank you, Dora. The pavement markings are the first that come to mind, and you've already mentioned that. We do find that the pavement markings aren't effective long term. So they tend to be fairly effective in the first seventy-two hours or even week. And after that are just part of the part of the scenery as usual. So that is, that is a challenge. Signs and replacement maintenance is is always a challenge, particularly a center line signage. So as far as best practices go, I, I can't say that there's a consistent guaranteed great approach. Each of the schools has very, very different street network and context. So it would probably be on a, you know, site by site basis. But typically, we're seeing things that are more effective at lowering speeds or narrowing travel lanes through temporary measures as a bit of a pilot or something along those lines, you know, not a small effort, but often worth exploring opportunities for general traffic calming, regardless of the road classification fronting a school.
Thank you.
Counselor Herbert.
Thank you. This is very interesting reading, and it was great to see some of the changes over time. And it really did highlight the destination schools and the schools of of choice. And I understand these independent schools are, by definition, schools of choice. And we're going to have different expectations of mode share and tenants throughout. But I'm curious about going forwards, planning with the the school district. And as they change the programs offered in various locations, which I'm not sure the consultation process to date on on doing that. But can you speak to how this, how the school district's been communicating that with us as they go through their in future planning? So we're not playing catch up from an engineering front on on needed measures.
Sure, to the Chair, I can speak to that. So we do keep in touch with the school district regularly. As far as I know, the only changes that are happening now is a possible catchment boundary adjustment, which is actually fairly minor as far as impact on us goes. And there, we, I keep in touch with them on a number of issues throughout the year anyways. So so any large changes I would be aware of.
Thank you. And then who owns this going forward as far as the mapping, maybe communicating out the mapping to the new students? And as we have students moving through the through the system, I think the timeframe is five or six years between. So that's, you know, roughly half the school. Is that something that the the district's to lead annually to educate the the new, the new families and and students? Is the school board take this on and and do that? Is it packs or what's, what's the mechanism there? I understand the engineering bits fall to us, but the other piece is how how are those being handled?
So the communication out to parents as far as things like the best routes maps, we, I, one of us in engineering, often me, takes that on every September to, we send it to the schools and request that the school send it to the parents, which they typically do through their newsletters. And that seems to work quite well. There's a fair bit of turnover amongst the school administrators, which makes just keeping track of who's where at what time a bit challenging, but not too hard. The larger challenge actually is working with the packs. There is just a ton of turnover in the packs, not surprisingly. And so it trying to encourage the packs to take any on any of the actions that were assigned to them is actually the largest challenge, I would say, amongst all this. And so far, I would say it's probably an area of weakness in this overall plan. It would require a fair bit of our staff time or perhaps somebody else's staff time. I don't know what the answer is in order to, in order to continue to stay in touch with the packs on a regular basis to try and encourage them to do some of the work. So it's something that I don't have an exact answer for, but I do recognize it as an area that we need to work on.
Thank you. And a follow up. On one of your charts, it showed the actions taken to date. And the largest percentage of them were were engineering solutions from the district. And the enforcement piece was quite, was quite low. And I wondered if there was, is this something we can compare across communities? Or is it a site specific thing? That piece was, as much as we like to engineer solutions, I think every once in a while we need to like write some, write some tickets or be present. And I don't know how that's been scored. If enforcement is scored where X number of days of someone out front with one of the speed signs or having some positive effect without necessarily writing a ticket. But I just wondered how how that, if there was a way to compare that between other communities. And it felt short to me, but I don't, I don't know what, what sort of averages, averages are or where that would fit in other communities.
Through the Chair, I can maybe speak to that. The, for enforcement, so engineering the actions, there are a list of projects and and, you know, fairly comprehensive and and different scales as well. Sometimes up to fifty meters of a sidewalk will be in one project and a stop sign will be in another. So different scales of projects for en, for enforcement, we're really looking at speed. So one, you know, one action is to, you know, encourage our CMP presence during peak periods or or other periods within the school zone. And of course, compliance with with any other kind of traffic regulations. So by nature, there just aren't that many actions to give to enforcement agencies. And there isn't, there also isn't a way to say that it's complete. So the actions are, for when it comes to enforcement, generally speaking, are ongoing. And and that's really the nature, like, that's why we don't have as many actions identified as enforcement actions, because we really have a fairly small number of issues that require enforcement versus engineering that gives so many more opportunities to improve infrastructure within the catchment areas.
Thank you. Counselor French.
Thank you, Chair. So there, I didn't see much in the way of reference to cooperation and communication with the Board of Trustees in the staff report, and and I'm not surprised by that. I suspect that there's an element of unwritten assumption, and the school district leadership is aware of what the District of Squamish is doing to support transportation strategies for students. But I want to be certain that the Board of Trustees at School District Forty-eight, particularly the Squamish Area Trustees, Celeste Bickford, Ian Kent, and Rick Price, are aware of this work and supportive of it. So will staff just share a bit about the school district communication strategy with the leadership there?
Sure, I can speak to that. So back when this program started in two thousand and fifteen, there was communication between Mayor Heinzman at the time and the Board of Trustees in an effort to try to ask them to fund a part of the project. And they were not able or willing to do that at that time. I'm not sure which. And so we decided, the District of Squamish decided to go ahead with the project on its own. Since that time, I have been communicating only with staff. So I have not been communicating with the trustees at all. I am, I do communicate regularly with staff, at at high level staff. But I'm not sure what internal communication happens on their side. There's been a few projects that have occurred on SD forty-eight land, like that multi-use path between Houston Secondary and Ecall Squamish Elementary. And that did require communications with their trustees. So that's the only one that I'm absolutely sure of, or the only type of project that I'm sure of went to trustees.
Okay, thank you. And I have a follow up question as well. There are some schools that haven't been included in this Coast Mountain Academy, which is served primarily by bus and likely has very few students walking and cycling to it. And Squamish Montessori comes to my mind with preschool and kindergarten programs on Lager's Lane near Brennan Park. And and there could be other schools that I'm not aware of. So has there been communication with these two particular schools that I've noted about this program and their potential future involvement?
To the Chair, so I have not communicated with Coast Mountain Academy. I have been in touch with Lasag Law, and there is interest there. There's a bit of a question mark as to the location of Lasag Law, whether they'll stay where they are in the long term or not. And so that's the reason they were not selected, one of the reasons they were not selected this time around. We could undertake some more school travel planning with new schools in the future. My suggestion on that, though, would be to wait a year or two at least so that we can do a similar process as we did this year, where we do one or two new schools plus revisiting the old schools as well and doing some increased data collection. So rather than jumping into that next year, say, I was just waiting a year or two.
Okay, thanks, Chair.
Further questions, Council? Otherwise, I'll have one of my own. I have a question for Dora Gunn regarding prioritizing, evaluating various investments and recommendations. I wonder if Ms. Herbert may be able to bring up the slide titled Valley Cliff Trail. And this is in the School Travel Action Plan for Squamish Waldorf School. No biggie, but just if you may be able to refer to that.
So. Sorry, unfortunately, I don't have that page in in front of me on this, on this device.
Very good. I'll be able to describe it hopefully clearly enough. So after very nearly fifteen years of advocacy, residents of Hospital Hill and Valcliff still do not have a safe, convenient pedestrian trail from those areas to the three downtown schools, of course, including the French Language School at the Capstone University Campus. So this would arise more clearly as an issue for the present Safe Routes to School Program if the high school were to be included, which it is not, for for good understandable reasons, but it does have its consequences. Squamish Elementary, Ecall Squamish Elementary, is affected. But this is, and this is noted in the Safe Routes to School map for this school with the notation on the map, steep slope at the westerly end of the Valley Cliff Trail. That slope is so steep that people are getting hurt. And otherwise, people are avoiding use of the Valley Cliff Trail altogether. And this includes everyone from schoolchildren to seniors. So Ms. Herbert has given in a previous assignment for the district some welcome attention to this issue of the steep slope at the westerly end of the Valley Cliff School. Now, referring to the recommendations for the easterly end of the Valley Cliff Trail, that is Maple Drive, that is in the present package, I'd just like to raise that I and many of my Hospital Hill and Valcliff resident neighbors would be quite concerned if our investment were to be prioritized at that easterly end rather than at the steep slope. And so my question from Ms. Gunn is, are, can area residents be assured that the investment priorities, the action plan priorities, will be considered in this bigger context of looking at both ends of that trail in this situation? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Anderson. And yes, absolutely, I can assure you that we do look at the bigger context. When we're looking at capital projects for the upcoming year, we look at the active transportation plan as well as the active and safe routes to school plans. And then we also look at all the other capital projects that are happening and and other work that's being done throughout the district. So as far as that trail goes, the reason that it has not occurred so far is because we, there is a significant amount of contribution from the Scott Crescent development that occurs with a certain phase of that development. And so we are waiting for that, which is coming very soon. It might even be next year, and I will check before the budget is complete. We are waiting for that contribution before we put in any additional funds that are required from our side to build the the part of that trail that will be a lower grade than the current steep part. It was absolutely a high priority to do. It's just a matter of making making sure that we take use of the funding that we have available for that, that work.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. So if there's no further questions, I will then ask for somebody to move that the District of Squamish receive the Active and Safe Routes to School Program Update Report. Moved by Mary Elliott, seconded by Counselor French. Any discussion? Counselor Peddigo.
Yeah, just wanted to note, really appreciate all the work that's going into this. And and we're speaking about all this in the context of schools. But, you know, I think we observe that this improves the walkability and active transport functionality for for everyone in a big way. And, you know, being around the Highlands, there's still some work to do. But I I think the the changes I've seen so far for the school have made a real impact for the whole community that that I I really appreciate, walking around downtown in some areas that aren't impacted by this but are following the same design principles during the jaywalks and walking from areas where we haven't done any upgrades to areas where we have. I just feel so much safer and it's more enjoyable as a pedestrian to be out and about. So I'm I'm just really enthusiastic about seeing this work move forward and the the positive impact it it has for everyone, not just kids. So thank you.
Counselor Herbert.
Thank you, and thank you for for all the work on this. And it was particularly great to see the work being done by the schools, particularly Sky Ridge Montessori. And it highlights the work that that can be done by the 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 school or the pack or interested parties in the neighborhood. I I don't know who who leads that. That can positively affect things at their, at their schools. So whether it's that that Track Five and different programs. That can positively affect um, things uh, at, at their, at their schools. So whether it's that, that track five and different programs for the walking groups of to school, park pooling, um, all those other, uh, all those other ways. And, and I think it is important to highlight that that these changes improve the safety of the overall uh, community and are, are vital to uh, to keep everyone that's already moving in these ways safe. Uh, never mind uh, increasing the uh, the active transportation participation and so on. So uh, thanks for the work and I look forward to seeing the next engineering steps and I look forward to seeing the next creative um, uh, campaigns at the various schools to keep their students safe.
Did I see other hands, counsel? Any further discussion? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, we did already take a short recess previously due to our technical issues here at council chambers. May I suggest that we take a shorter break at this time of five minutes and return for the next presentation? And those folks are already on deck, ready to go. So five minutes from now, thank you very much. That'll take us to eleven oh seven. We have um, up next, a, a report on the Municipal Energy and Emissions Plan. Mr. Pickets, and will you introduce your guest?
Thank you very much, Ian Pickett. My name is Ian Pickett. I'm the Manager of Sustainability and Climate Change. And I am joined today by our Senior Energy Specialist, Kreen Ladue, and Sven Anderson and Bora Yun from GHD Accounting Limited. GHD Accounting Limited has been our consultant for this project. They've worked extremely hard for us, researching, modeling, remodeling, and often repeating that process several, several times. We are, we're very grateful for their expertise and commitment and it has been a very productive professional relationship and really value their, their skills and knowledge. I'm going to pass it over to Sven Anderson, who will now present the background information that informed the modeling uh, for this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ian. I'm just gonna set up the presentation here. Is invisible. Thank you very much, Ian. To the chair, thank you very much, um, to allow us to present you with background information on the project and development of the Municipal Energy and Emissions Plan. I will provide, provide you with the project activities and also a quick introduction to ourselves. Myself, I'm a greenhouse gas accountant and I was the lead project um, at, at this, for this project, as well as joined by my colleagues, Bora and Clarice. Our purpose and social purpose is to provide community contributions through our work of standard and regulation-based quantification of greenhouse gases, as well as researching best practices to apply them to the reduction of greenhouse gases. In that, we are hoping to support communities like yourself and achieving their sustainability goals. And in, in that work, we also consider social justice and and of course, also the credibility of environmental aspects as a whole of our work. And we are available to provide and communities groups and other organizations with capacity building and, and as part of our social contributions to communities. In this project, it was important to allow the district to achieve their stipulated target of reducing their emissions by twenty, for forty-five percent from twenty-ten levels. This is stipulated in the Community Climate Action Plan and is a goal that is within the bigger framework of achieving the global target of limiting global warming to one point five degrees. And as you can see in the original text here, as it stated, it is part also on the pathway of getting to net zero by twenty fifty. So it was very important to have a realistic, tangible, practical and applicable strategy to achieve those reductions. And make sure that we are in our work considering the most up-to-date information, most accurate information and also the most best available best practice considerations in order to achieve this in the most meaningful and also cost-effective way for the district, so that you can act in a responsible way towards this global contribution. One of the activities that we undertook was to look at your actual emissions, your corporate emissions. So the emissions that result from all district activities of providing services to all members within the public. One of the small challenges that we had to overcome was that your original data for the two thousand and ten inventory was not functional equivalent to your later years' inventories. That means not exactly the same information was considered. So therefore, we had to do a small corrections on your twenty-ten inventory in order to make it functional equivalent to all other inventories that you have reported. In doing this work, we have established the inventory of one thousand three hundred and twenty-six tons of CO2 equivalent of greenhouse gases. And that was our benchmark to apply your goal towards, so the forty-five percent reduction, which resulted in a, in sorry, inventory number of seven hundred and thirty tons of CO2 equivalent to be your future inventory in twenty thirty. As you can see, there is quite some variations within the, the inventory. And as you can see, there is quite an increase in the years towards twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. There are of course, like, I think quite factors that influences this, but overall, there is a trend of going up and it's also equivalent to your population growth. So therefore, it was prudent in our modeling to consider population growth. We use population growth as an input into our modeling, what your current inventory of buildings and services and activities will result in, in, in an inventory in the year twenty thirty. That was part of the modeling activity. We also looked at your inventory from twenty thirteen, eh, twenty nineteen, sorry, twenty nineteen inventory as a pre-COVID inventory of the most recent operational realistic inventory, which is stated as one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven tons of CO2 equivalent of greenhouse gases. If you compare this to the target of twenty thirty, it's already a reduction of fifty-two percent. If you look into this twenty nineteen inventory in its characteristic and oriented by the service areas as they are defined under the current program and the, and the um, climate neutral handbook by, provided by the BBC government for the Climate Action Charter, you can see that if you contribute the different sources of emissions towards your service areas, that there are three areas that stand out as being the biggest emitters. Those would be your fleet, so the fuel that's used to operate your vehicles, the fuel that's used by your supplier or service provider to collect waste, and the biggest area is all the areas that are related to recreation. Mostly the buildings that are using energy that are contributing to the contribution of thirty-two point nine percent of emissions total inventory emissions. If you take all those three areas together, they represent almost ninety percent of your inventory footprint for the corporate emissions from the year twenty nineteen. This is not unusual. It's a very common um, profile that we see with a lot of municipalities and local governments having this profile. So there's nothing unusual about it. However, of course, it is important to direct the activities and funds towards your biggest emitter and make the biggest difference where you can make the biggest difference in the most efficient and best practice-oriented way. So that's what we did, to look into those areas in a predominant way to both model your emissions for twenty thirty as well as finding ways and strategies to reduce them. Another perspective, of course, it's important, is your building stock and looking at which buildings are contributing the most to your emissions. And if you split this between purchase electricity and natural gas use, you can see that there's one building that stands out significantly from all the others, and that's your recreational facility, Brennan Park. And you can see that with the majority of the line being green, that that's the most biggest contribution comes from the use of natural gas. So that makes a large part of their emissions. And also the, um, of course, there are other buildings as well that we have looked in and in our modeling. We have projected these buildings forward with the best information that we have been provided by your asset management plans and strategies that you have in place so far. Based on this review, it was prudent to orient your strategy within different pathways. Those are oriented based on the information that we have gathered so far, meaning your building stock characteristics as well as your profile of your GHD inventory. And therefore, it makes the most sense to address the most intensive areas first and then go down and address the, the six subsequent ones from then on. So the most important aspect was to address the building stock because with Brennan Park being one of the most single biggest emitters, it was important to consider both the plans for the building as well as what is best practices. So that would be the pathway one. And we looked into this and modeled this. And of course, as part of that is the prudent or the, the, the common approach to lower demand first. So make buildings as energy efficient as possible based on existing guidance, which will be the net zero standard of the NBC. And then look towards other means of reducing the carbon intensity of the energy that's used within the building. Next comes the fleet, of course, that being the second biggest contributors to your emissions. And that as well, we looked into best practices and ways of reducing the contribution that this activity will uh, provide towards your emissions. And fourth, the, the waste collection. Again, that's another pathway as comes from the characteristic that we looked into, how to reduce the emissions, the most efficient and best practice-oriented in this area. And then, of course, as part of the net zero, we, we know also on a global scale that we cannot reduce emissions to zero. There will be remaining emissions. In order to counter those, it would be a good idea to have opportunities to sequestration. Also as part of, of course, the commitments under the Climate Action Charter to be carbon neutral, it would be prudent to look for emission reductions that are happening within your jurisdictional boundaries. So outside of your corporate inventory, but in, within your jurisdictional boundaries and those ones ideally be nature-based. So that the uh, protection of nature and the protection of carbon pools within nature will contribute to net zero achievement. And then as the vast pathway, we considered why there is sustainability responsibilities and considerations of the built-in carbon. Very important to understand is that these emissions are not part of your corporate nor of your community inventory. However, by addressing this within your strategies going forward to twenty thirty, you can make a meaningful contribution to, for example, circular economies within your community, create green jobs and lower emissions that are associated with your buildings. Not part of the inventory of operational emissions, but of built-in carbon. And so we also looked at that, if there will be good practices that could influence or be incorporated within the strategy. So in total, you have these six pathways, build upon actionable insights, as we call them. We look at the facts. What's the status quo? Where are the most emissions come from? What are the biggest contributors? And based on that, we build a logical um, strategic pathway portfolio to address those in a meaningful way. One of the challenges, of course, was what is happening between now and twenty thirteen. And one of the things that we already know is that there is a plan to expand the building that has the biggest footprint. Here was a consideration, this is like a, an image of a, how the expansion potentially could look like from existing plants. Doesn't have to be looked at, but this is just a, like a visualization of how this facility could be expanded. And then the question, of course, comes, how does a strategy meaningful contribute to the planning of this building as it is a very significant mission source? And there are, of course, very good plans or considerations, also the practices in place to look at all the different technologies that could be used as a single step. However, from a strategic point of view, that would have been going way too much in detail, would be almost like having the nose to the ground too much in order to achieve our strategic goal here. We are aware of those technologies and they should be employed, but for the purpose of developing this strategy and the plan, it was important for us to take a different approach. It doesn't mean that we ignore these aspects and we ignore the need for providing guidance to work on an everyday basis towards this. But for the purpose of providing an overall framework, we had to ask ourselves a different question. We had to ask ourselves, based on best practices of things that have been achieved in other, other local governments, what's the best we can achieve, the commercially um, and financially responsible way and also technology risk responsible way. That's why it's so important that we look at best practices. And we did so in the case of a swimming pool and an ice ring. And indeed, there are best practice examples where buildings that are housing a swimming pool and an ice ring have achieved the net zero in, in energy demand standards. And so that was for us the guidance to explore all the other buildings and also the experience you already have made on your fire hall. And so that we are not getting lost in individual technologies, but have a meaningful, incredible claim to make. Other local governments have achieved these standards. So therefore, it should be reasonable for the District of Squamish to say, if others have, have achieved these, we are able to do this as well and we are able to make this a reasonable, incredible considerations in our plan. That's what we did on many of the buildings, this is just an example, to come up with a scenario where we consider again your profile of emissions as well as your building stock and model a pathway towards twenty thirty. If we do this without any consideration of the goal, which is represented in this graph by the red line, the so-called business as usual, BAU scenario, you will end up with a footprint of about two thousand two hundred and sixty-two tons of CO2 equivalent of greenhouse gases as being your corporate inventory, considering all the aspects that I've shared with you, which is like population growth continues roughly at the same level. But you are not having any plan in place or any consideration of lowering emissions. You just go ahead as usual and you would um, upgrade your building stock without considerations for emission retardant target. So that's blowing your target by significant amount, as you can see, out of the water. And you would have to reduce your emissions by almost seventy percent, exactly sixty-eight percent reductions. That cannot happen overnight. So it's clearly very important to have in place a strategy now that's clearly oriented and, and very, very much oriented towards your profile and your buildings and is also realistic in order so that you are able to achieve your target. But hopefully, enlightens you or emphasizes the importance of the strategy so that you are able in a planned and strategic way and responsible way are able to aim for your target and not blow it out of the water. We applied the energy efficiencies that are possible, that have been achieved by others and in align with the BBC net zero standard and modeled your two thousand thirty inventory. That's the purple line. And so you end up at about nine hundred and six tons of CO2 equivalent with that modeling. That's still above your target. So you have to make another effort. And of course, as, as I said before, you look at the energy demand reduction first and then you look at the kind of energy. And that's what we did also in the second step. We looked, what would happen if we do go for a hundred percent electrification? And that's for all areas that we looked at. So a hundred percent electrification for buildings for your fleet as well as your garbage collection. So all areas have been modeled in this, if towards a hundred percent electrification, very important. This line doesn't only represent your building stock, it represents all the service areas that I named before in the pie chart. And only then you will get to a level of four hundred and eighty-eight tons of CO2 equivalent of greenhouse gases. So that is a, you will overachieve your target in a way, but of course, this is a projection. So that's a much safer um, trajectory to go for. So in overall, the, the modeling tells us that you have to do more than just reducing energy demand. You have to look in the kind of energy that you look and ideally, you have to look for a hundred percent electrification in order to achieve your target. If we now look at the building stock and put overlay their building stock with the targets, overall targets, which is the areas in green, yellow and orange within this chart, you can see that, oh, very, very soon, the business as usual scenario in twenty twenty-three is already blowing your target just the building stock alone. And with the population growth and no consideration for emissions. So by the time we come to twenty thirty, a large part of, of your emissions overshoot is contributed from your building stock. So it's very important to, to make those considerations of energy reductions, electrification, to have even as tight as chance to achieve the target. And you can see here again, how the electrification and had the energy demand reduction is contributing towards your target. Please keep in mind that there are other services that, that are also part of this. And so by just looking at the building stock, you wouldn't be able to, to. you wouldn't be able to achieve your target. And if you look at the overachievement, the 488, there is some room to maneuver. And the room, the maneuver is specifically there so that you have options of adopting to reality, so to speak, that maybe you have to only do 98% of electrification on your fleet or on your garbage trucks or on your building stock. So there's some room, but the strategy specifically looks at this from an overall perspective. And so in the realization, you were able to have room that you need to plan of carefully going forward and monitor this. So this is a summary of our modeling in in the way by service areas. So and you are able to see the the business as usual scenario here in the first column. And the pathways that I highlighted before, I I underlined in blue here. And so this gives you a more quantity, quantified pathway and development. We also can see in different areas, for example, in the in the fire department, as you have already rebuilt buildings, you're already like on the right trajectory there versus other areas that we haven't considered in this, which are your drainage pumps and water and waste management pumps that are only modeled as as population goals and where you have very little influence on how you can influence this. And and you are not likely to replace pumps that are in the ground, you're more likely to maintenance them and also their contribution towards the emissions as well as small. So it was important to concentrate on the big areas. And you can see how it from that light green area, which is an energy demand reductions, you go to the bright yellow, right green one where you are achieving the the target by 100% electrification. And that's gives you, so to speak, the overshoot of about 490 tons and towards your 730 target. Thank you very much for allowing me to extend the background and I hand over to Ian.
Thank you very much, Sven. Okay, I would like to share my screen if that option can come up. Okay, is, can you see that? Hopefully, great. Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to present the how we took the information that was provided to us and how we
Excuse me, Mr. Pickers. I wondered if you may be able to expand the slide. Yeah. You're just a partial screen at this time.
You need to press the presentation button. So go in presentation mode.
Okay. We're good to go. Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. So now we're going to present how we we took that underlying modeling information and created the municipal energy and emissions plan from that or the MEAP. So there are several strong reasons that we we indicated that it is important to have a separate municipal or corporate plan. One of these is that these are actions that we have a high level of control over. So it's quite different than, for example, community retrofits where we, you know, there's only so much we can do to get a resident to retrofit their home. There's a lot we can do to control most of these actions. It's a great opportunity to provide an example, to showcase what decisions and how to make these decisions can look like. There are some cost savings associated with this plan, particularly operational costs. It is important to note that in most situations, this will not offset the higher capital cost though. Also, we have really good data to help us inform this plan and to track and monitor our action. So as part of our CARP reporting, we have been tracking our corporate emissions since 2008. As Sven has covered in excellent detail, this is the result of extensive modeling and pragmatic thinking. As such, we have really put the focus of this report to six explicit pathways. So it's very clear what we can do to have the biggest impact. Also, as this footnote, I just want to be very explicit that the and hopefully the report to council was clear about this. But the 45% reduction, which is actually a 68% reduction from business as usual, is an ambitious target. This plan does have consequences and there will be challenges to implement that. So just want to be very, very clear about that. Our first pathway is retrofitting existing buildings. And a major focus of this is on Brennan Park. It is worthwhile to note that Brennan Park on its own, under a business as usual scenario, could surpass our emissions reduction target. So only this building could shoot past our 730 target. Therefore, it's a very clear first pathway for us. One of the the challenges is that it is it is pretty difficult and also cost expensive to retrofit to a high efficiency standard. It is generally more difficult than to building to a net zero ready standard. However, GHD accounting has found some really helpful case study examples that show that this this is possible. Our second pathway is efficient low carbon new facilities. So our goals here are a net zero energy ready standard for all new buildings and to all new buildings fully electrified. So this is very, this is necessary for us to achieve our target amid amid the growth that we are experiencing in our capital plan. And also, it is much more cost effective to build to the standard than to retrofit to it. Obviously, this does have significant additional expenses associated with it. And just for context, an electrified net zero energy standard ready building typically has 90 to 95% less emissions associated with it, operational emissions than a traditional building. So pathway three is fleet electrification. So GHD accounting put forth two very helpful scenarios for this. So one is a fully electrified municipal fleet for 2030. And another is a scenario that has all of our medium in small vehicles electrified and 50% of our large duty vehicles. Fleet is a real opportunity because it turns over much quicker than buildings, obviously. So there's much more opportunity for us to transition our fleet. This is also an area where the technology is just exploding. It is rapidly changing. And there's strong market signals that electrification is is moving forward quickly. You know, signals like companies like GM indicating that they will not even build combustion engines by 2035. This is also very, very challenging because a lot of the technologies that we are proposing be implemented are still in development. Sometimes they are not even available at this point, and often they are expensive and hard to get a hold of. So for context, the the two scenarios that were that were laid out, the full electrification scenario has about an 89% reduction as compared to business as usual, in the partial one a 68% reduction. So that's the 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 two different scenarios that that Sven laid out, the moderate and ambitious action, the the moderate action has the 50% and the ambitious action has the full electrification. Our fourth pathway is solid waste collection. So this is quite similar to the fleet electrification. We are we are aiming toward full electrification of the waste management fleet. Waste management, waste collection is an ideal candidate for electrification, given the start stop nature of travel, which lends itself very well to regenerative braking. And the fact that these travel a very defined route, so it is much easier to balance kilometers and the charging regime. Challenges similar to the fleet, these these trucks are currently rare, hard to find. And if you do find one, they're they're not cheap. Also, we are reliant on an external contractor. However, this is an area where we are, we are confident we are going to see the the technology change quickly. So the first four pathways, the ones that I've just finished going over, are our major opportunities to reduce emissions. Are next to our other opportunities as we that are not going to affect our emissions or our number. But there are opportunities for for further reductions. And as we get closer to net zero, they're going to become more and more important. So our fifth pathway is sequestration. So our major goal is to develop a carbon offsets program. This is a really exciting initiative because there are so many co benefits associated with conserving and restoring natural environments. And there's so many reasons that we are already pursuing these actions, whether they be aesthetic, recreational, there's environmental, etc. And in a large number of instances, these are actions that we're already pursuing. So it's allowing us to to get an additional benefit and to provide an additional incentive to undergo restoration and conservation activities. There are quite specific criteria that have to be met to achieve an offset. It has to be shown to be beyond business as usual. So it's the increment additional conservation that happens, not, it has to show that it's beyond the conservation that would have already already happened regardless. Other really interesting opportunities are associated with blue carbon or carbon sequestration that's associated with marine or coastal ecosystems. And the final pathway is another, it's important to note that this is a we don't have the baseline information and this isn't in our inventory. So pursuing this is not going to affect our our numerical corporate emissions per se, but is a very important opportunity for global emissions and it's very opportunity, good opportunity to drive markets forward. So our goal for this is develop an embodied emission strategy. This becomes more and more important as buildings get more efficient because with a net zero energy ready building, we are, we will see that the embodied carbon is more than 50% of the total life cycle carbon of the the building. So as we get more efficient, this becomes relatively a larger proportion of our emissions. This is also a really exciting field in that there are opportunities for low and even negative emissions alternatives. So in our opinion, this is a real opportunity for a kind of a good news, a good news story where there's some really exciting, really exciting movement forward. So I want to reiterate, just for clarity, a few of the statements that were made in the MEAP and clarified in the report to council. So firstly, this plan does have significant budget implementations to capital projects into fleet purchases already in the five year financial plan. We are not able to establish what these costs are at this point. This plan, implementing this plan will require external funding. We are confident that that there is ample external funding available and that the the having this this document adopted will position the District of Squamish positively for for getting a lot of this funding. Implementing this plan will require ongoing staff time related to capital projects, related to fleet, related to public works, related to facilities and related to the sustainability group. And if adopted, this will require ongoing consideration. Staff will recommend the best actions to achieve emissions reductions targets on a project by project basis. And will seek approval from council regarding budgets and expenditures. So this is, you know, this is something that is going to have to be constantly evaluated and and considered. And as Sven very did an excellent job of laying out. You know, we're going to have to constantly be weighing the costs and benefits between those two scenarios, the one that almost gets us there and the one that gets us a little past there. It's going to be a constant kind of push and pull where we we look at the costs and benefits and we we make decisions on an ongoing basis. So our recommendation is included on this slide. As everyone has it in the report to council, I won't read it out at this point. And alternatives to the recommendation, two of them that we've included are as follows. Okay, thank you very much for for your time and to Sven for for sharing his information. And we now are very interested to hear your questions and to have discussion about this.
Thank you, Mr. Pickers. Mr. Anderson, a question for Mayor Elliott.
Thank you for the support. It is exciting. It is also intimidating. One of the questions I had was around the challenge of waste management. And I wondered if you considered modeling a whole new way of approaching waste management. So we have problems with contamination, we have problems with wildlife conflict. And so our neighbors to the north, people still drop off their garbage. So you have more oversight of that sorting process. So did we, did we consider just getting rid of garbage trucks and being in neighborhood hubs or having a central location? And how that would impact emissions?
Ian, do you want to direct a question to me or?
Please go ahead.
To the to the chair, that's an important consideration to consider also demand, of course, on the waste side as we have done for the for for the buildings. We we consider though, or based on our experiences, you will not be able to get rid of waste collection completely. However, there are some best practices in order to consider the emission that results from waste. Those emissions are far greater than the emissions from your garbage trucks itself. And so the the scope in which you would consider this is your community wide emissions. And so that that would be and and this is my understanding that staff recommends at some point to look at that as well. And and address those. So as 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 you, as an entity, have different means of control over your emissions that are from your wider public and relation and waste, we one of them. It would be a scope of that. And to answer your question, particular on the subject matter, there's there are examples of reducing the the amount of waste and that would be a resource centers where you have like a circular economy. And there is an element in the MEAP that that considers that. And that's the 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 last pathway of the embodied carbon where you turn waste materials potentially into building materials. So that, so there is kind of like the thinking in mind to to support a future community by emission reduction strategy with having that strategic aspect and where you can, as within your scope of control of your emissions within the corporate control contribute to reducing this and supporting a circular economy.
Thank you for that. I think it's important to remember we have initiatives in so many areas that touch waste management. You know, right from wildlife to economic development and developing a circular economy. And so they just wouldn't want us to look at this particular recommendation in isolation of all the other things we need to address. My other question, and we heard this when we passed the low carbon incentive by law. It came up a little bit in the community in the key climate action plan is people's fear that if we fully electrify buildings and then we have a power outage, that there's no redundancy or resiliency in that system. And I wonder if there's best practices or ways that that communities are addressing that fear.
You know, I guess the question that I should answer them, tell me to. Okay, to the chair, yes, the consideration of resilience is, of course, in future planning, an important aspect. And as part of the directive of looking at infrastructure, you have clear considerations in place within Canada to consider both mitigation and adaptation, both being medication being reducing emissions and adaptation adapting. And so in the consideration of 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 the MEAP plan, it was again the scope to to look at your emissions and the way that you can reduce them. Alternative energy sources and local energy sources are in an important consideration as well that to be made, but they don't contradict the MEAP plan. The MEAP plan is there so that you have a goal of where your emission should be and what your trajectory should be. If you add now adaptation to it and you may have a resilient strategy, just sort of keep keep things clean, so to speak, that that every every side or as like does their thing as best as possible, so to speak, if I if I can say it that way. Then I would fully encourage you to also have a adaptation strategy, which will include that you create that energy that you need, the electric energy for those buildings locally, because it also creates jobs and because it also creates jobs and based on the framework you have in the VC from being able to become a utility, I will strongly encourage you to consider those in order to um create the, the, the electricity that you need for those buildings. But in our experiences, it's helpful not to mix these topics altogether in one strategy, but have like a clear target projection and then have a community emission plan that, 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 that works in parallel with this and is coordinated as well as having an adaptation plan that, that, that clearly addresses those. And so each single strategy is like clearly focused on one area, the one that's supposed to, and the other strategies will work um in coordination.
In our five year financial plan this year, um, not replacing um the, the um fossil fuel fleet vehicles. Um, and sort of an I, an idea of when we'll stop purchasing them or delay replacing them because we see electric models come on the market. So we often see out a few years, you know, buy this heavy duty truck and that pickup truck and this car. What I think I would see after we adopt this plan is that there will be no new purchases, but we might prolong how long we keep one of our pickup trucks until there is a pickup truck that's elected. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, so specifically again, the, the, the strategy is not um limiting you or, or forcing you to buy things in a certain year. It provides you the direction um to achieve something by a certain point of time and over time. And that will include that you can adjust your fleet replacement based on your physical and economic needs and availabilities and funding flexibly towards the target. And so that's why you need to review them um in regular intervals towards that target to see have we achieved in fleet, what we need to achieve by that time or not. My, based on the modeling, I can tell you that basically up to the year twenty twenty five, you would have greater levels of flexibility. And after the year twenty twenty five, the, the flexibilities are very limited. So where like policies have to be more stricter or plans have to be more stricter than, than they have been before. So if you're adopting this plan, doesn't mean necessarily because of the nature of the plan that you have to, you only allowed to buy electric vehicles from tomorrow on. It means that you should have a plan where your turnover of the vehicles will lead you to be fully electrified by the year twenty thirty.
Further questions, counsel? Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, just uh two clarifying questions and thanks for the presentation. Um, the first is in the modeling, it suggests that the fire department uh emissions remain steady across all modeling scenarios into the future. And I'm just curious why that is, given that we're updating the two fire halls first.
So this already considers your activities within the fire department. So the, the number is your end result. So you, you already like on the right track, so to speak, with your fire departments because you're already achieving the low intensity and electrification. So the, the, the strategy shows you or, or recognizes that you're already on the right track with your, those buildings, so to speak.
So it's already accounting for that change. Thank you. Um, and then my other question was just around the electrification of the fleet. And in the MEAP, um, it breaks down kind of the actions with leads. And we didn't actually identify our procurement manager as part of that team. Um, and I'm curious uh if, if we can do that because I see that as being a huge uh important piece in terms of what our leverage will be in that limited market space and our ability to actually get access to some of those higher duty trucks. Um, will probably require some form of partnership across multiple municipalities and we might be able to do it alone, um, but just wanted to check in on that one.
To the, to the chair, that's an, that's an excellent point, Ms. Stoner. Um, yeah, that's, that's well taken. I, I, I agree. And just um to further expand on that, this is, this is an interesting area because um we, we want to be very careful that we want to push the markets forward and we want to be aggressive and we want to be an early adopter. But at some point, we have to balance our, our expenditures and, and to the extent to which we are just pushing another community out of having one of those vehicles. So you know, this is going to be one of those kind of real points of ongoing discussion and the, the weighing of, of cost and benefits. And again, it's, it, it's challenging because I, I believe that we are, we are thinking toward a paradigm that is not quite upon us with, with regards to these vehicles. So in today's situation, this, this seems untenable, but things can and, and may well shift very, very quickly. I believe Mr. Buxton might have begun speaking, so please, please hop in if, if you were.
No, uh, I don't think I have anything to add in terms of, of that in other than um, all of our procurement with our subject matter experts flows through our procurement division. Um, so that, that's going to happen as a matter of course. Um, I did just want to touch on the, a further clarification to the mayor's question around are we not going to replace any fossil fuel vehicles? We can do that as best as possible. Um, there are certain vehicles coming up and I think a fire truck is one of them. If that technology is not available, we're left with the option of trying to nurse a, a critical vehicle along, which has some risk. Um, so that, that's a trickier decision. I think if it's a, if it's an F one fifty or, or a standard light or moderate vehicle, uh, when there's a, there's a timeline for, for EV replacement. But if it's a critical vehicle of, of a, of a fire truck, let's say, um, and there is no replacement technology, EV technology on the horizon, that's a much more difficult decision for us to, for us to make and decide not to replace that vehicle. So in large part, yes, absolutely. I don't know that we can make that commitment. If no further questions, uh, Counselor Stoner will go to Counselor French, followed by Counselors Race and Peddingo and Perford.
Uh, thanks, Chair. I um see that there's no reference to the transit fleet. And I see similarities between um our waste management vehicles and the transit fleet. So how, how does the transit fleet fit into this discussion?
Sven, you probably have the best perspective on municipal inventories to tackle this, if you don't mind.
To the chair, um, as part of the work was very important to be clear about the inventory boundaries and boundary settings, of course, an important part of greenhouse gas accounting. And to be very clear what's included and what's excluded within an inventory. The corporate inventory, as it's stipulated under the Climate Action Charter in BC and the Becoming Carbon Neutral Guidebook, um, defines of what constitutes your corporate emissions. And in there, the, the garbage collection is included and aspects of transit are excluded. So this is not a choice of this project or a choice of the district as we're just orienting ourselves with the framework that the province provides us in order to account for this work. And there they clearly distinguish between those. And um, and I'm sure you're aware that there, I mean, there is other organizations like BC Transit that, that have also a, a saying this in terms of level of control. It doesn't mean though that you cannot take the, the findings and strategy from your corporate strategy um, and apply this to your future community wide. And so the, the question of transit will be addressed or will have to be addressed as part of your community wide emissions and the boundary setting within there.
Okay, thank you. And I suspect the mayor may have some thoughts on this with her connection to BC Transit. Thanks, Chair.
I suggest we'll go to Mayor Elliott at this time on this topic. Please.
Thank you. BC Transit is committed to have a fully electric fleet by twenty forty and will be replacing many electric buses in the next five years. Um, so that is being taken care of at the BC Transit level. What we need to do is build facilities to hold them.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. No further questions from Counselor French, who put Counselor Race.
Thank you. And Mr. Anderson, and, and I might have missed something. I'm, I'm sort of furious about the growth and how we account for growth because the subject came up in an earlier discussion this morning. And, and I wanted to go back to your first graph that you put up. Uh, if you could pop that up in the screen, please, and I maybe misunderstood something you're saying.
Um, I need to be give, to the chair, I need the ability to, to show my screen, to share my screen to, oh, thank you.
Uh, is that one? Yes. And, and me, as I say, maybe I misheard you, but in that conversation, uh, you were talking about accounting for population growth. And then you said you've already decreased by fifty-two percent and I didn't quite get the connection. Uh, so how do we account for population growth? Um, and, and does that affect our target?
And to, to the chair, so in, in the case, the, this graph represents your corporate inventory only. It doesn't account for population growth. The reference I made to population growth for the years twenty fifteen, ten sixteen is the, the steep increase there because it, it, it's been parallel to your population growth. So we considered that as, as empirical evidence, how your corporate inventory is related to, to population growth. And we calculated a factor based on that and applied this to the future projection of um, of your inventory. So we considered your population growth in the past, how it has influenced the inventory on your corporate side and have modeled that to model going forward as, as a, um, as a modeling instrument. But this chart doesn't have any relation to population growth from a quantification point of view. It just, um, we used and combined, combined these two things.
But what, what came up in the discussion this morning when we were contemplating a proposal for an entirely new subdivision uh was the question of how that might affect our climate targets because now you have more people, buildings, et cetera, uh, in a particular area. And while I appreciate that that might be considered the community uh footprint, uh, nevertheless, as the district corporate entity, uh, we have to service all of this growth, uh sewer treatment, waste management, uh, more trucks, et cetera, uh, the whole, the whole thing. And is that taken into account, the fact if we're part of a growing community, our municipal infrastructure uh will be growing uh at the same time as we're trying to reduce emissions from it? I mean, I recognize the fact that we're buying a truck, we can make a decision uh to go um electric if it's available. But there's a number of things that we haven't quite got control over and technology doesn't seem to have control over yet or totally control over. And yet we're faced with servicing a, a growing population, which is probably going to keep on growing unless we somehow close the door.
And to the chair, yeah, that's a very important point, Counselor, that you mentioned there. And we have considered exactly that. So we have used in the past, how has population growth influenced your corporate inventory? Because it's serving the community. And we use that knowledge to project forward. How future growth will impact your corporate inventory? It's an indirect way, exactly as you described, from sewer, from trucks. But that's exactly what we did, that we considered that growth to influence that moderate continuous growth to what twenty thirty influence your, your inventory in the year twenty thirty.
Thank you. And so my final question is, is I'm listening to the presentations and, and and Mr. Pickett's too as well, and I'll, I'll put the question or the comment out to both of you. And is it, um, I, I get the impression that, you know, in a perfect world, the technology would be there and we could just make decisions going from one to the other. Uh, but as you note, uh, there are significant cost implications, uh particularly right now, where this is sort of at the start of the change of technology. And I think back to, I've been around longer than a lot of you. And, and I think back to, you know, when color televisions first came out, they were extraordinarily expensive, but eventually they came down to the point where we could afford it. But we're now talking about the next nine years and somehow getting this technology in place within the next nine years, uh, which could be in the life of that technology extraordinarily expensive upfront. Uh, and over time, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, it might become more manageable. And so I'm wondering, you know, for a town of twenty-two thousand people, uh, is it too small a scale to try to meet a target like that? Or should we be looking more at a provincial level? And we get our provincial average down to meet these uh climate targets, uh, recognizing that not everybody is going to be below the line. We can make best efforts, of course, but you know, is it realistic in some cases? Are there, do you think it's really possible with the technology without expending an extraordinary amount of money?
To the chair, so the, the, the concept of um prudent financial planning for a community and being responsible with taxpayers' money is of course a consideration for all our local government clients. And so therefore we have adopted the practice of very strong emphasis on best practices. So none of the things that are considered in this plan have not been adopted anywhere else. None of them is like future technology that's still like on the drawing board. All of the considerations that we have made, both in energy efficiency, demand reductions, as well as applied electrification, are things that are in place and have been realized in, in a cost effective way. So you have, you're, none of the plans or considerations, you will be like um the, the upfront funder of doing this the first time. The first, the actually garbage trucks are going to arrive in, in BC with municipalities, I think, to them this year. Um, already with some municipalities and as, as you may, might be aware, like UPS and Canada Post already have electric delivery trucks in use. So we're not um considering technology that's totally out there where you're like, would be complete pioneers. So you would be at the forefront of innovation, but in the, in the midfield, so in the responsible midfield, if you would adopt them. And specifically also, there's flexibility so that you are, as Ian has mentioned, that you have flexibility on a day by day basis, make those responsible um decisions. To the question of if you should do this or rely on the province. The province's funding plans, for example, the Clean BC, and just yesterday, the, 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 the program authority of the renewable fuel standard has decided to, to award credits to um EV charging stations um, and, and have like financial revenue. So if you look towards the funding framework within Canada and also towards the funding opportunities under the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, there's a strong emphasis of both the federal and as a provincial level to enable municipalities to make a difference where they can make a difference. And so I would argue that you have plenty of opportunities within the framework, both in funding as well as a regulated regulatory framework to being a utility, for example, that gives you all signs and justifications to enable and take the responsible act and acting within your community.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'll, I'll chime in as well. Counselor Race, I think you, you raised excellent, excellent questions. Uh, first, I'd like to speak to your initial question for a couple of minutes. And I, I think this is a, a really interesting analogy to our community emissions. Uh, we are, we're fortunate in this corporate inventory of much better data, so it's much less speculative. In our, in our community inventory, we're kind of reliant on indicators that we are shooting for, that we know interrelate to emissions reduction. Here we actually have much firmer numbers. And we actually see that the increase in our building envelope. We, we have a strong idea of what that's going to be. So uh, as Counselor Peddingel raised that excellent question in two presentations ago. Um, so we actually know what that new kind of inputs of carbon are going in to be into the system. Um, one, I think important cautionary note about this plan is it shows how important it is for any new, uh, any new building to be uh as low carbon as possible through efficiency and electrification efforts. Um, in regards to your se- your second point, I am, I, I think you, you, you raise really, really important considerations. And um, the way I see this plan coming together is that um is, is going forward with it with the recognition that things have to come around and come into place in support of it. So uh, through technology, through support from other levels of government, um, and that in combination with the, with Squamish's willingness to, to be bold and, and to be a leader, but to balance that with appropriate spending is how this will, will come about. But I, I do certainly recognize that on its, Squamish on its own uh is being very, while they're very expensive or even impossible to hit this, but with, with those other things coming into play, uh, I definitely have confidence that, that we can hit it. I definitely have confidence that that we can hit it. Mr. Buxton or Ms. Glende may may have some thoughts on this as well.
Just please. Mr. Pickett summarized it very well. I just go add that's on our own without external funding at its time. Our long term financial plans will be severely pressured by this plan. That said, as Mr. Pickett summarized, with external funding, looking technology, our hope and confidence is that we will get there. A current snapshot is that it is incredibly ambitious and will create a lot of pressure on you.
Thank you. Unless you have further questions, Counselor Reese, you will go to Counselor Pedengal.
I'm good. Thank you.
Excuse me, please go ahead. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of things. And you know, the resolution sort of talks about doing this stuff to the degree our funding and financial conditions allow as opposed to we can't fund it, we got to figure out a different way. And you know, the the presentation is sort of here's a couple of options. And there is this compromise option, which gets us maybe most of the way there. And as a council, we're always dealing with compromise. We often have to compromise. But it's not clear to me that compromise is available to us in this scenario. And so that's what I want to understand a little bit. You know, my understanding, this is driven by the 2018 IPCC numbers. And that was premised on the idea that if we didn't do much, temperature is going to rise about two degrees or more by 2050. We'd have severe weather and trillions of dollars in costs, lots of people passing away and so on. And and so we need to take significant action. But you know, it was really significant action. And so we built that action against sort of a best case 2050 scenario, just understanding how tough that action would be. But as I understand it, what we've seen, you know, in the last couple of years is we're already at those 2050 weather outcomes. We're already seeing sort of those outcomes today. So that implies, I think, the the scenario we're facing is actually far more challenging. And so realistically, do we have the ability to compromise our as our most likely scenario, when the next IPCC report comes out, we're going to have to find we need to make much more aggressive actions to survive this. And and so can we be planning around a compromise solution? Or do we really have to be kind of pedal to the metal? You know, that that sort of the more aggressive of the two options in the report is is where we really have to start from. And it's really a starting point.
Mr. Pickett, would you care to offer some reflections on this one or Mr. Anderson?
Through the chair, it's a it's a very, it's an excellent and well articulated point. I was intentionally pausing, wondering if anyone further up the food chain wanted to have a first take at that. But if not, I'm I'm welcome to pontificate.
I, yes, I think that that's the critical question that council has has to deal with in terms of we can push this as hard as as hard as we can. But there are some significant implications. And if council wants to push, we will, we will push. We just wanted to let you know that it's significantly more impactful from a resource and financial point of view than than previously we had thought. And that's there are some tough decisions here for council to make.
Okay, so just one other sort of context framing question and then one follow up. So it was mentioned earlier that GHG Accounting Limited, you also look at the the equity piece. My understanding of that 45% 2018 IPCC reduction number, is that sort of everyone collectively getting to a 45% reduction? But I believe the data shows that wealthier countries tend to bar more pollute far more GHGs in the atmosphere than other countries and also have more resources to change and diminish. And so I guess, is there a sense in in this sort of space, this accounting, that more affluent, wealthier areas actually should be targeting greater than 45% reductions for from an equity perspective?
And to the chair, since I presume this question may have directed to me. So yes, I am appreciate that you, constable, that you are mentioning this. This is an important aspect of our work and something that we strive towards. And this also, even though it wasn't part of the scope that we are asked, we were asked to find a way to hit the target. However, we provided you with a best practice scenario to undercut your scenario. And and that was of two reasons. One of prudence, because the numbers can change as you clearly identified, and we would agree with that in assessment. And second, because there might be also consideration of social justice in there as well. So for many, many reasons, we deliberately provided you with a with a realistic and responsible pathway to to even undercut your target.
To the chair, one small thing I will just add in, I I very much appreciate your your comment, Counselor Pedengal, but we we do, you council directed us to not not include population growth in our target. So in a sense, we are going beyond it in that sense, you know, you you may write, you may argue that that's not enough, but that is, that is, you know, we're actually 68% under our business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. So and okay, appreciate understanding that context. And I guess within that, then, you know, there is some strategies outlined here. If we approve this, how how do we ensure that we are quickly adapting and we are finding, you know, assuming it is necessary, and it seems like it will be to take more aggressive action than what's outlined here? How do we make sure we can do that and we don't sort of just stick to the plan that we we staff has the ability to to take those opportunities sort of as as quickly as they appear? And you know, there are some things that that for me, you know, we've talked a bit about staff compensation in terms of we'll retrofit your home and as part of your compensation, so the same money out of our pocket, but we're having those reductions out in the community and and having all those other sort of knock on benefits. And so things like that, which maybe that's too much detail for this plan. But does this plan enable that sort of thing? Does it get in the way? Do we need to come back and do another draft? Or how does that sort of thing fit in?
Through the chair, Sven, please feel free to elaborate on my answer or even contradict it. My my sense is that there's a little less room for for that type of work with our corporate inventory. It's a it's slightly more straightforward. It's it's mostly kind of the business of running our municipality. So it's pretty limited to our our building and fleet emissions. However, I I do believe that this plan, you know, we're we're calling for it to be revisited in in three years. And I I I don't think that this plan constrains us in any way from being opportunistic and adopting other new technologies and and revisiting it. So I do feel confident that this plan is not is not constricting in that way and will allow for further innovation. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, Chair. One one final thing I I just saw my notes. We've been talking about our real estate facilities master plan. We know there's a lot of capital expense tied with that. We're talking about possibly big expense here. Is this or has this caused us to rethink things like working from home? Like the pandemic gave us some experience in that. But should we be thinking, we actually need 90% of the people working from home 90% of the time? And we need to start planning some of our facilities around that sort of thing, because in terms of just costs and all of this put together, that really is the sort of action we need to be taking at this point in time.
I would like to move to Counselor Herford. Sort of interpret that, Counselor Pedengal, as a comment. In the interest of time, I'd like to move to Counselor Herford and the questions you may have to bring to us.
Sorry, Chair, I was more curious if that is a sort of discussion that staff have been having, if if there has been any sort of discussion or consideration of that sort of thing.
To the chair, you still. So it's important that you facilities still need to be there in order to provide services. So you you still need a fire hall regardless of if people work a moment on, still need a recreational facility regardless of people work from home. So this is not a consideration within the the bigger picture of looking at the facilities and your services.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Herford. Thank you. This was a very educational reading and that Brendan Park really jumps off the page. So thank you for doing the work to to highlight that. I I am curious about, you know, I know there's been some talk about how how fast we can move and how fast the technology moves to get us there. And I'm positive that making our luck finding our fleet on in December 2029 doesn't get us there as far as the reductions over time, we start realizing those benefits immediately. But we'll rely on the technology and the funding to hopefully align and and work this towards that. Well, I'm curious about in Pathway Five, your sequestration, natural assets come up and natural assets have come up in other conversations. I think it was the other form of stormwater. Yeah, stormwater management plan, I believe is where it was. But I'm just curious about tying those together as far as. And maybe this isn't outside the scope of our of our corporate per se, but as far as other benefits in in the community, thinking sort of overall heat from management, there's stormwater management, there's all sorts of other pieces. And I'm just curious if if we could speak to how we account for that in the or how we could be better accounting for that in the in our overall practices in this.
Through the through the chair, I'll take a take a stab at this one. It's a it's a really good point. We, as part of the creation of this plan, we had a really excellent workshop that Sven and Bora led. It's another area of expertise of GHG accounting is sequestration. So that was an opportunity to bring together environment, our real estate and facilities and and sustainability groups. As I mentioned before, I I do really think that this is an opportunity to just add another benefit to these types of actions and further incentivize and and reward them. So so there already has been some effort to bring people together toward this. And I think the creation of a sequestration strategy would would further that. So it's it's a really good point. There's a there's a whole suite of benefits that that can be realized through this. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose a sequestration strategy is is one step. I'm also curious about just an overall natural asset inventory. As they provide services throughout services, air quotes, you can't see throughout many assets or many aspects of our society. But I'll I'll leave that one aside as it's a a huge, it's work. I'm curious about checking in the three year check in and whether that's an appropriate amount of time, given that in the next our real estate facilities master plan, we're making some other sizable decisions on facilities in a in a shorter period of time. And there may be needing to be some modeling and 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 other check ins on what the consequences of those decisions are. Maybe in the in the first, maybe in a shorter time, a shorter timeframe. So I'm just curious how how I get that over the without taking into account how quickly we're changing in the bigger pieces that we're contemplating moving in the next couple of years. How do we land at that that three year? And is that in fact appropriate for 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 a check in another one?
Through the chair, it's interesting you mention that. That is a number that got changed back and forth through through quite a broad range of numbers. A number of several times, there was a lot of discussion about what the what the best check in time was. And we we ended up going back and forth a lot between two and three years. I personally advocated for three years. We are, we are putting into, you know, starting to lay the groundwork for a number of pretty substantial projects right now. And I I personally would like to see them them move along a little bit further. However, if council if council feels strongly that that should be shortened to to two years, that would be certainly something I I could live with and I I think is also good arguments for. Just for example, Ms. Ladue and others are there's a energy study going on for Brendan Park right now. And we're we're really actively thinking about how we can start to move to move that project forward. So, you know, in in three years, we're hopeful that we can see and measure and reflect on some some actions that have meaningful emissions reductions associated with them. Thank you.
Mr. For you, Counselor Herford or unless there are other counselors with questions, I'll go ahead and accomplish my own at this time. Mr. Pickett, I'd like to start with the the Pathway Three Natural Assets Sequestration Opportunity as it's outlined in the D H G Accounting Company Report. And my question is, what are the next steps in considering these areas as they are defined on a map for sequestration opportunity? That is, a lot of work has been done already, but it would occur to me that a couple of these areas that are defined on the maps given for a couple of these areas, a number of questions would come up as to future land use. There have been a couple of buried proposals, for example, for the old landfill, which on Bailey Street, which is included. And for the boundaries of the valley itself area. So it's just a procedure or next steps question. Will this come back to council at one point? Are we ready to proceed with these defined areas in the sequestered natural assets program?
Sven Anderson may may want to build on this. So my understanding is that we're already, we have already taken actions to get carbon offset credit for some of the lands. So so these are, we can get credit for things that we've already done. So I think a real easy win is to is to get that. Also, another important step is to work with with real estate and with the environment group to identify further opportunities to to move to get sequestration benefits, like to gain those carbon offsets. We've through the workshop, we've already identified forest conservation and wetland and marine restoration as our three priorities. So those are the three types of projects that we have to go for. And we would need someone, either GHG Accounting or someone with similar expertise to help us go through that process and make sure that we that we hit the very specific criteria, like showing additionality, et cetera. Sven, please, please feel free to elaborate on that if there's something I'm missing.
Thank you. And to the chair, the in order to answer your question or the next step, the the strategy just prescribes only to pursue those areas for the purpose also to have them recognized. They're not linked to one piece of piece of land. The strategy just outlines the the district to pay attention to those activities and have them recognized as being offsetting and reducing emissions or sequestering CO2 out of the atmosphere. And so the next step would be to create a more framework around those as as more lands come on, that you have a framework to do the quantification and apply to all the quality standards that so that you have a credible claim to them. And that's what Ian referred to, to say that that you would have to, as a next step, establish that instrument, that framework to have lands as they come on, being recognized in the credible way. So that's considerations of of additionality, of future land use. And all the aspects that play into this are considered, recognized, evaluated and documented. And and you have a a credible program that contributes towards the emission reductions that you contribute to.
That is, if I can confirm then that if in a particular parcel that's been identified, a land use change may be proposed. For example, we might put greenhouses somewhere. This is not going to hold us up for implementing this this strategy. Our procedure will be able to take this into account and 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 work forward.
To the chair, that's correct.
Thank you. I have a second question. And Mr. Pickett, it is more of a comment, but before But before we go to our approving the plan, I thought I would bring it forward and it is more or less a concern. And I'm asking for comfort really on two matters. One has already been raised by Mayor Elliott, and that is taking into account resiliency and reliability of our energy system. Both at the building level, the vehicles level and more broadly. For example, I see throughout the report that electrification is is a preferred option, a strongly recommended option over, for example, bioenergy. And we have for space heating, for example, here in Squamish, we do generally have local opportunities. And Mr. Anderson has spoken to that factor of building resilience. That can be a factor in building resiliency in a in a local system. So I'm wanting comfort that even though it is not very explicitly highlighted in these documents, the issue of resiliency that we can take this into account ongoing. And before I have you comment on that, the second part I'm concerned about is economic development co benefits. I do see throughout that environmental co benefits, well, in particular in the chapter on natural assets, sequestration, environmental benefits are highlighted. Economic development co benefits are not. And for example, green building materials industry is an export industry opportunity for Squamish. And it's not just involving an opportunity of development of local expertise. This is significant because one of our big greenhouse gas emissions issues for Squamish is our housing to jobs ratio imbalance and the long distance commuting that takes place on a large scale. So I'm wondering if you can give me comfort that the economic development pro benefits can be identified and a lens can be applied for that factor as we implement this plan. Because I just, my concern is it isn't very explicit in the document that it comes up a couple of times. Say wood versus concrete. Well, green concrete products are not an export industry opportunity for Squamish. Wood green building products are, and that's a very big difference that isn't suggested, if you like, a couple of places in the report. Can you give me comfort on this supplying an economic development for benefits lens and the resiliency lens? This has already been highlighted by Mayor.
Through the chair, these points are taken, getting a, oh, okay, I think it's gone. These points are well taken. We were, we really made an effort to make this plan as streamlined and as concise as possible. So we did make a, you know, we really did not try, we really made an effort to not bring in those other aspects and other other kind of considerations into this. We tried to make this very explicitly focused on six pathways and really GHG focused. So so that is our rationale for for the approach that we took. Our our community climate action plan, in our opinion, really does encompass a lot of a lot more of that information. But we really wanted something that was was pointed. With regard to resilience, resilience and efficient, like the passive house or net zero ready houses. There's a large amount of adaptation in those buildings. They emergency response capabilities. When you get onto onsite energy creation, they have, you know, given that they're so much more efficient, you have much larger amount of time that you can run them. They lend themselves very well to renewable energy. Actually, the net zero energy ready standard is defined as as it is energy efficient enough that renewables can readily be installed to to power the home. So we did make a decision not to include renewables in the in our in our scenarios and in our modeling as in our C cap, we are not given direction to approach that. Our our first step is toward electrification, but onsite renewables is a natural next step. And and to to Counselor Peddingill's comments earlier, it's it's another opportunity to go beyond that target. So so these buildings lend themselves very well to renewables. They have air quality co benefits and they have added resilience co benefits in that they're much easier to, they use much less energy. The agree with the the economics. I believe that one of the ways that will really manifest is through the embodied carbon strategy. There's, we are, we are actively working with economic development on our circular economy strategy. And we've have made some exciting progress toward embodied, working on embodied carbon and and economic development will be will be intimately involved with that. It is definitely one of their that green sector employment is one of their priorities. And with regards to other like bioenergy, Sven Anderson might want to elaborate on this. But the, you know, to try to be very pragmatic, the electrification was identified as our first kind of a first and bigger step towards towards reducing greenhouse gases. So there's, so it is not preclude that, but that is our kind of initial, our initial pathways right now. I think I think I addressed most of your comments, but they, I can assure you that there are things that we have have considered and will continue to consider. But trying to make this report very pointed and very short, we we elected to kind of keep it to the delta GHGs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Are we ready for the motion, counsel? The recommendation from staff is that the district is one that should prove the municipal energy and emissions plan and incorporate into the district's financial plan and work plans as funding and financial conditions allow. Do we have a Hoover for that recommendation, Counselor Herbert? And a seconder? Counselor Stoner? Further discussion? Mayor Elliott?
I'd like to propose amendment that it would be the district's school which approved the municipal energy and emissions plan incorporated into the district's financial plan and work plans in lines with our targets for reducing our GHGs.
Counselor Peddignall, are you seconding that amendment? Any discussion? Counselor Race?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to support this amendment. I I think, and this is almost my comment on the main motion, I I generally agree with the direction that that these goals set for us. I agree with the idea of setting goals. But one of the real fears I have is the costs and whether or not they will be realistic over the future. I I understand we're not going to be the first to do some of these things. But it can be just almost as expensive to be the second or the third or the 10th as opposed to the 200th. So I do worry about some of the costs of some of these initiatives. Brendan Park is an example that frightens me, to be honest. With the, we know how much the new expansion might cost, the thought of adding on a renovation to the existing premises to reduce its impact is is also another frightening concept. So I I my worry about this is is the costing of it. And I don't want to commit at this point to putting it into our financial plan when we don't know what senior government money might be available or where we might find the funding for it. You know, it's one thing to get grants for a new building or something like that, but I don't recall in the past any grants for a new truck. And these types of things are going to become more expensive if we lock into this. So we'll not support the amendment. We'll support the main motion, but not the amendment.
Counselor Peddignall?
Yes, thank you. I I will support the amendment. I I think it's a an improvement I to the resolution that I was I was hoping to see. As I understand the presentation, this does not require us to buy an electrified fire truck immediately. It sets the goal and the understanding that this direction we need to head. But if it's not there, this does not require us to do that if we need the fire truck tomorrow. And so, you know, I think that should address my call these concerns. I I do think more generally, we don't have the luxury of of not hitting these targets and taking aggressive action. And so I was concerned the way the original motion read that sort of framed it as, you know, for my interpretation, if if funding just doesn't allow it, we'll just sort of stick with the same old and we can get by with that. And that's maybe technically not what it says. But I I appreciate this because for me, it makes it much more clear. If if we just can't think of a way to achieve this, then we have to have a discussion. That's what this forces. And so what do we change? Do we change the budget? Do we change different actions? And it forces us to have those discussions earlier and make sure we're taking that action. And I don't think any of us with this, as I perceive this amendment, are suggesting we do things we can't afford. We we can't do that either. But if if what's in this plan is not affordable, we have to have a discussion about what's in the plan and what our general approach is. And so I'm very happy to support this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Herbert.
Thank you. I'll support this amendment. I I I think that through all our budget processes, we're we need to, as always, check in and weigh the benefits and and make sure that we're being responsible with with taxpayer money and achieving our our objectives. So this change in wording does, I think, strengthens this, the intent of this. But doesn't really lock us into taking specific actions and spending specific expenditures. But I do think that it does elevate the importance of these actions. So I'll support the amendment.
Any further, Counselor Stoner than Counselor French?
Wondering if Mayor Elliott could please repeat the amended language?
Incorporating to the district's financial plan and work plans in line with meeting our GHG reduction targets.
Thank you. I will support the amendment. I think my my biggest challenge with it is the balance that we continuously have to make in terms of where the municipal energy and emissions plan fits in more broadly to our community climate action plan and other efforts that we might take in order to reach our goals at various levels. And so I sometimes worry that we place an over emphasis on potentially putting a lot of dollars and capacity into achieving net zero or not as zero, but net zero by 2050 at the municipal level, whereas we know that we might actually have a much bigger carbon impact at one of the actions under our community climate action plan. So for me, that's where I'm constantly balancing where we put our energies. And I think this plan is really helpful to put some context to that. I am really, I am willing to support the amendment, knowing that the community climate action plan does not get us to our 2030 targets of 45% reduction. And so we need to go above and beyond that. And I think that the amended language helps put that emphasis in into our considerations, both for the municipal and corporate emissions reductions as well as how we address that in the context of our broader community climate action plan. So I will support it at this time.
Counselor French?
Thank you, Chair. Speaking in favor of the amendment, I I certainly share Counselor Race's concerns around cost. And I also have a great deal of faith in the budget process. I think that is the place where we make sure that our costs are kept in line. So I support the amendment. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the amendment. To me, the amendment is not about being irresponsible, it's about being very responsible and making sure that we have the conversations we need to have with our community and internally as well. And I think the amendment also better links together our community climate action plan with the municipal emissions plan. So that was one of the reasons I proposed it. There's a lot of hard decisions we have to meet. But every time we have raised the bar on climate action in this community, new people have shown up to with ideas, with suggestions, willing to partner, willing to be at the table. And I believe that has to be part of the strategy to continuously raise the bar for ourselves and other municipalities and encourage the innovation and the collaboration and the ideas. And so this isn't about being irresponsible with our our dollars or our intention. It is about encouraging others to join us and be innovative with us and figure out what is ultimately a very tough feature that we have to navigate for ourselves in future generations.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Seeing no other hands, I'll off my own comments at this time. I will not be supporting the proposed amendment motion. I do wish to echo the notes of caution expressed by Counselor French, but also the element expressed by brought forward by Counselor Stoner that we may be over emphasizing the our corporate emissions strategy. And this may affect where we put energies. I think that there's a large picture in which to consider what we're doing here. So I'm much more comfortable with the originally proposed motion. So I would not be supporting the amendment, but I'll put it to a vote now then. So the amended motion is that the district is one that should approve the plan incorporated into the district's financial plan and work plans in line with meeting our GHG emission reduction goals. Any opposed? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Race opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Pickett, Mr. Anderson. Sorry. We'll hold the vote in the main motion. Thank you for your orientation. So to to come back to the main motion then. The main motion as amended. All in favor? Any opposed? I'm sorry. Yes, okay then. Well, Counselor Anderson opposes and oh, I'm yes, okay, that's it then. So that's that's carried. Thank you. Excuse me. We are now, you have been delayed, but it's due for, we're due for a lunch break. And counsel, what time would you just, we should return? Should we give ourselves half hour that is quarter after one? That's what we'll do. We'll reconvene at 1:15. Thank you. So we're reconvened in the committee as a whole. And next up is a presentation from Keely Kidner on the inclusion, diversity, equity and access committee and its terms of reference. Ms. Kidner, please.
Thank you. It's wonderful to see everyone. Hello, Mayor and counsel. And for those of you who are tuning in online, my name is Keely Kidner. I'm Research and Projects Coordinator at the District of Squamish. And I'll be speaking about the idea committee. I just want to let everyone know, just a quick reminder that I am deaf. So I'm plugged in with my hearing aids. But if we do run into any issues in the conversation and discussion, I want to make sure I hear everybody. So we might need to make some accommodations if there's any problems, but hopefully there won't be. All right, let's move on. Can everyone see the screen? Great. So I a couple of things that I'd like to speak about today. I'd like to talk about a bit of the background of how this committee started. I'd like to speak quite a bit about the structural approach to the diversity, equity and inclusion that the committee is taking. And then I'll speak a bit about the scope, vision and mandate as part of the terms of reference, some of the current actions, budget implications, next steps and the resolution. And hopefully we have some time for some good discussion. So here are some of the large events and resolutions that have led to the work of the idea committee. As most people know, in 2015, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, or TRC, released their final report about residential schools, which contained 94 calls to action. And many of these address municipal governments. In 2018, Squamish Council endorsed the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, which outlines the minimum standards for the survival, dignity and well being of indigenous peoples of the world. And last July, council passed a resolution asking staff to bring And last July, council passed a resolution asking staff to bring a lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion, also known as DEI, to the district. The resolution is copied here, but I just wanted to highlight a few key points. As you'll see, the Idea Committee is developing an internal organizational plan to address diversity, equity, and inclusion at the district, as per the first point in the resolution. The committee is also using a structural approach in order to embed DEI work across the district. This takes a lead from council's apt metaphor of applying a lens throughout the organization. A structural approach also incorporates assessment and measurements of progress, as outlined in council's final point in the resolution. And in regards to the district's engagement practices, committee members are collaborating regularly with our communications team to ensure our processes incorporate this lens and use best practices for engaging with the community in an inclusive way. Now, I want to stress that all of this work is part of an ongoing process that will evolve over time. I'd like to speak a bit more about the careful approach that the Idea Committee is taking to this work. So DEI work has been practiced for many years and has continued to evolve in that time. The Idea Committee has researched the evolution of this field in order to engage in best and most up-to-date practices. A traditional approach tends to use a number of concepts. So individual actions, which focus on personal responsibility and change, diverse recruitment, which focuses on recruiting more diverse people to work, but with often little concern for making those diverse colleagues feel a sense of true belonging and inclusion. This focus on diverse recruitment also locates DEI work squarely in the Human Resources Department, making diversity a HR problem. Anti-bias training, which recognizes that everyone has unconscious bias, but often avoids discussions of power and responsibility. And public statements, which are often reactions to events or critiques. However, in a traditional approach, these are often more concerned with liability rather than real change. On the other hand, a structural approach focuses on the following: data and measurement, the importance of establishing a baseline and understanding the effectiveness of our interventions, accountability. In some ways, this is a basic result of data collection. We actually know what's going on. We know what is and isn't working. And that allows us to avoid prioritizing promises over action. Systemic change across departments. DEI does live beyond HR, and all departments should begin to integrate the lens in their work. And embedding into process. And this is the crux of cultural change and ensures that DEI initiatives outlive individual staff members or champions and becomes part of our organizational culture. So in summary, a structural approach uses three basic elements: researching and defining the problem, as opposed to reacting without knowledge and potentially even causing more harm; implementing changes at a structural level through design-based thinking, and that is designing structures to encourage behaviors and outcomes that allow diversity, equity, and inclusion to flourish; and measuring and assessing the effects of our interventions and understanding where we can continue to improve, as this is an ongoing process. Ultimately, this work deals with a very complex system, our organization. And so one of the difficulties in discussing complex systems is that they're complex. In order to better understand, metaphors can be useful. However, I do want to say that because these are such complex systems, no one metaphor is going to adequately convey all the information. But I wanted to present two metaphors to you today that can be used to understand certain aspects of this work that we feel are important. First, this work is inherently about change at a structural level. So when a caterpillar transforms into a butterfly, it doesn't just get a pair of wings or antennae and remain a caterpillar. The process of metamorphosis is a process of structural change that happens in every cell throughout the caterpillar's body. Likewise, structural change happens throughout an organization and not simply in its recruiting practices. A true structural approach helps shift an organizational culture so that something new and hopefully beautiful emerges. The second metaphor is one that has been brought up many times by First Nations elders, especially in regards to truth and reconciliation. I've heard many elders speak of the intergenerational work that needs to happen in order for true healing to occur. So we need to recognize that systems and structures that cause harm have been in operation for hundreds of years and will not be dismantled or changed in one week or one month or one council term, for that matter. And so elders speak of a bridge that spans generations and that it is our current work as the intergenerational bridge to begin building this bridge of truth and reconciliation for future generations. In a similar way, the work that the Idea Committee is undertaking is long-term. And it begins the process of bridging to a new place. We may not see the bridge finished in our time, but we have begun building, and that's what counts. As we know, in a structural approach, change comes slowly. And in this approach, the focus is on developing relationships, and therefore the currency is time. In a structural approach, organizations also might learn some uncomfortable truths about their actual levels of diversity and belonging. And because diversity, inclusion, and belonging may not be present at the outset, organizations may need to sit in discomfort while they assess and design the best path forward. This is a very difficult and uncomfortable time, and many respond with a form of action bias, which is a way of reacting without considering the effectiveness or appropriateness of the action in order to get out of the discomfort. For example, some organizations may immediately bring in people from equity-seeking groups without consideration for their experience in the organization, which may be considered tokenism. Often, this works well to ease guilt or give the impression of diversity, but it may in fact discriminate further against equity-seeking individuals. Organizations may also invite current members of equity-seeking groups to disclose their experiences of discrimination, which has been coined "trauma mining." These sessions may be used to prove that discrimination exists and often are not followed by any real structural changes. And this, of course, causes equity-seeking individuals to relive trauma unnecessarily. Instead, a design-focused and structural approach tells us to embrace the tension, stay the course, and work to truly understand the problems. Only then can we design appropriate interventions in collaboration with equity-seeking groups that are embedded in processes and work to shift organizational culture. So as you can see on the slide in the Deloitte Diversity and Inclusion Maturity Model, this is the transition point at which organizations begin addressing systemic barriers. Below this, the focus is on awareness raising, compliance, and ad hoc support. Of course, there will be low-hanging fruit, those issues that can be immediately addressed, and the Idea Committee is identifying these as well. But ultimately, true change that goes beyond the level of awareness of diversity and moves into embracing and embedding diversity is deep and structural and will require research, resources, and time. So as such, the Idea Committee has developed the Terms of Reference with a structural approach that begins this work within our own four walls. So the scope of the committee is an internal staff committee that will support council and the CEO to implement as appropriate the Declaration, the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, the TRC Calls to Action, and an overall commitment to inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility within the District of Squamish. Although this committee is focused internally on staff work, we do recognize that many of the internal changes will lead to external improvements in our engagement with the community. I do want to recognize that there is also a lot of work to be done internally. This work has begun. The vision: We are committed to truth and reconciliation. We value diversity, access, and inclusion. We create safe spaces. We celebrate individuality and innovation. And we're humble and unwavering in our approach to continuous learning and acceptance, recognizing that this is a process. The committee works to cultivate a safe and inclusive workplace, identify opportunities to apply this lens, support a diverse and inclusive workforce, provide consultation, advice, education, and discussion about these values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and seek and share resources to identify where we can continually learn to do better. In terms of current work that the committee has been doing, staff are working on a number of actions. So one large one is the Quake Lab Inclusion Strategy, which is a course that has been offered online. And staff are working closely with DEI expert Sharon Youngway, so who's based in Toronto and is the CEO of Quake Lab. So four members of the Idea Committee are completing the course together in order to assess our current practices, policies, and organizational culture across the district, determine and prioritize the challenges, research and engage with stakeholders to develop solutions, and develop an inclusion strategy. And this is something that we're working on across the district, but that can also be sort of squared down to different department levels as need be. Another area of focus is on the calls to action of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and especially in light of the recent discoveries of unmarked graves in residential schools. And I just want to acknowledge that there was another announcement today, the former Cooper Island Residential School. And so staff have been analyzing ways forward in this work, knowing that it is top of people's minds as well. Most specifically, we're looking at TRC Action Number 57, which calls on all public servants to be educated about indigenous peoples and the history of residential schools in Canada. So staff have been working with Kathy Camilleri in the past to offer building bridges workshops. And the Idea Committee is working to offer this on a more regular basis and make sure that all new staff are able to participate and that existing staff who have not participated are able to as well. And staff have mentioned that this is truly transformational, this work. We're also developing and offering resources to staff. And by that, I mean we're looking at embedding awareness of the TRC actions into onboarding processes so that everyone who comes to the district to work for us knows that we are called to action. We've also launched an internal staff reading and discussion group centered on the book 21 Things You May Not Know About the Indian Act by Bob Joseph. And this is a bit of a pilot project, drawing upon the resources that we have at the public library to sort of begin a deeper discussion on these issues for staff who are willing to and have capacity to participate. In terms of budget implications, the work does fall into the special projects budget for 2021, which includes training, research, and expertise. So all of these things have been ongoing. It's important to note that future budget specifics will depend on part on how the idea team develops their work plan. The next steps for the Idea Committee include the development of an inclusion strategy with the help of Quake Lab, which is already underway, the development of a committee formation best practice in order to ensure that we have a diverse group that is set up for success in future cohorts. This is the first cohort of the Idea Committee, but we want to make sure that we're able to get a diverse group of people who are going to be participating in future cohorts. We'll continue offering education related to TRC Action 57 and developing a work plan related to the other TRC Calls to Action and the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. And this will be done through careful and respectful engagement with Squamish Nation. That brings us to the recommendation that the District of Squamish adopt the Idea Committee Terms of Reference. And I'll now turn it over for discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kidner. Counsel, any questions? Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious to know how many people are on the committee? Is this a lean group or is it a large group with many people on it?
Through the chair, the first cohort, I believe, were eight people. And we have a good representation across different departments across the district as well as throughout the hierarchy of leadership as well.
Okay, and I'm also curious to know about frequency of meetings. Is this a group that's meeting, like, are the cohorts meeting once a week or more regularly?
Through the chair, we are meeting bi-weekly as a large group and then bi-weekly with the group that is undergoing the audit and assessment strategy work with the Quake Lab work. So a number of us are meeting weekly, but as a large group, we're meeting bi-weekly. We're using Microsoft Teams, so there's also a lot of work that's happening when we're not speaking face-to-face on there as well.
Great. Thanks for that additional context. Thanks, Chair.
Hey, Counselor French. Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. Yeah, the Terms of Reference under accountability, it talks about developing a work plan by April each year. And I was just curious why this wasn't better aligned with the budget. So having a work plan ready to go for January.
Through the chair, I think that we did discuss this, and I think that our discussions ended with having a work plan for April so that we were well-prepared for budget time, recognizing that budget time is also coming up very soon for us and that we'll have some sort of work plan before April at this point. But we wanted to be looking further ahead, I believe.
So the idea would be that it's for the following budget year?
Yeah.
And then under the Policy section in the staff report, it talks about policies that the Idea Committee would look at. But I would like to suggest to council that maybe with some of the guidance from the Idea Committee, we look at council's code of conduct in the light of what this committee is learning. And this is on our agenda planner for 2022 to compete before the end of our term. But I think it would be a useful exercise to look at it, given that we've seen recently young electeds across this province, one indigenous, one from the LGBTQ, having to leave council or take a leave of absence from council. And so I think there's always work for us elected officials to do to make sure that our policies that guard our behavior are creating an inclusive environment, because we do want more diverse people to run. So I would definitely add that on to, as maybe assistant council with the Idea Committee could provide us with some insight as we do that work next year.
Counselor Pedengill?
Yes, thank you. And I apologize. I was chewing some pizzas. I had my camera off and I forgot to turn it on. Had my hand up for a while with my camera off. So the first bit of the resolution from last year asked for an internal organizational plan to support a diverse, inclusive, and equitable workforce. And, you know, from a values perspective, organizational values, that makes a lot of sense to me. I think we've begun work on that, which I think is really important. And it's the sort of work that I think, based on our community values, we do regardless of other impacts. It's just sort of a must-do regardless. And that support for that seems very strong in this. The other piece, though, in this resolution is ensure that all residents can access, participate in, and benefit from the district's facilities, infrastructure, programs, and services. And for me, that's the sort of public benefit of this work. And I did see some reference to looking at how we do our committees and so on. But it's not as clear to me how all of this results in that sort of broader community outcome and that broader community inclusiveness and so on in their interactions with the district. And so I guess I'm wondering if you can explain, is that sort of a phase-two thing? We think that's just a natural outcome of the internal focus? Or can you speak a bit to where that piece comes in?
Through the chair, yeah, I'll speak a little bit, and then maybe CEO Glende would have something to add to this. But there is indication that when you complete structural changes like this, because of the nature of the work that we do with the community, that it will sort of go out into the community if we're adopting that lens and the work that we do begins to be seen in the community and our interactions with the community and our facilities. So in some ways, that work will come to the public. However, we recognize that we did need to create a scope that was respective of the capacity of the committee members, while also recognizing that we had a lot of work to do. So in some ways, it will be, you know, visible in the community a little bit more, but it's not explicitly in the scope. And perhaps CEO Glende would like to add more to that.
Ms. Glende?
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you, Ms. Kidner. And I would also like to, the Idea Committee and the staff that is at heart of it already in terms of the capacity that we have, such important work. In terms of anything more formal with regards to this motion, it is quite a comprehensive motion and we have a lot of respect for it and we're quite proud to have their council that's passed this motion. That said, anything beyond what the committee is working on now will come forward in work plans and new versions. If it's more, like, there will be impacts, but more formal impacts or audits will require new motions and work forward, but not to consideration. Thank you.
Perfect questions. Counselor Stoner? Excuse me, Stoner, I just saw Counselor Pedengill's hand. If you had an additional question, Counselor- It's Stoner, I just saw Counselor Peddingill's hand. If you had an additional question, please go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm sorry, Ms. Glende, a little bit of that broke up. Is it the idea then, sort of separate from this committee, we will address some of those more external focusing things? Or coming out of the work of the committee, there will be recommendations to do some of those things?
Through the chair, the recommendations will be both through the committee in terms of what can be accomplished with current capacity and what would move the person to further grasp counsel.
Thank you.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, through the chair. I have a similar question to Counselor Peddingill and to follow on on his line of questioning. Appreciate that there is a lot of work to be done in terms of internal work on inclusiveness, diversity, equity and accessibility. But specifically to those points around how we make community or committees more accessible, how we make our services more accessible. There's a point in the Terms of Reference that references collaboration, but I'm curious how we get actually a really strong understanding from those outside of our organization around what the hurdles are if they are, if this is solely an internal committee.
Through the chair. So some of the work that that is happening through the inclusion strategy involves primary and secondary research. There are some best practices that can be done, that can be implemented, I should say, that can support people who are currently working for us, but also implementing these best practices through through what we know through research. So that we can create supports for those and create an inclusive environment for people who may come in into our organization in the future. So there are already some, some research pieces out there that that committee members can use. There is also stakeholder engagement that can be done, of course, internally. In terms of public engagement, we have been collaborating and meeting regularly with Sam Fordham, who's our public engagement specialist. And Sam's developing some methods for engaging the public that incorporate best practices around inclusivity and and diversity and inclusion. I don't know if Sam would like to say anymore about that or if that is is sort of the direction that your question is taking. But there is some work happening in that area as well. Does that?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Ms. Kidner. Ms. Glende?
And thank you to the chair. At risk of being repetitive, it is important for counsel and to understand that we currently have the work that we are presenting today in terms of the terms of reference, the internal work getting on hold in the year and just that is what the capacity we have. We would like to deliver on this motion. It will take time, it will take and we will bring those people forward.
Didn't catch the last third of what Ms. Glende said.
Apologies, can you hear me now? Okay, thanks. The long and the short of it is that the capacity that we currently have is delivering what Ms. Kidner has presented to deliver on the balance of the motion will require more resources and more time in the future, which we will propose.
Ms. Stoner?
Thank you, that is helpful. I would, if if Sam does have something additional that he would like to add in terms of our communication strategies and how we make our external communications and make sure that we're hearing some of those voices in our community, I would love to hear a little bit about that.
Hello, my name is Sam Fordham, I'm the public engagement specialist on the communications team. And through the chair, I can I can touch on some of that. We have been working to develop some some new stakeholder mapping resources that will help us get a better sense hopefully of not just who our stakeholders are in some of these decisions, but how they're impacted and then what barriers they might face to actually participating in these processes. So hopefully at the start, we can have a better sense of of the decision making processes of who's going to be really able to participate really easily in these processes and who's going to need some focused attention and support to really involve in a meaningful way. So we're coming up with some mapping tools that we can, we can hopefully use to paint a better picture of that at the start. And that is sort of the result of working collaboratively with people in the district as well as as well as stakeholders in the community that have intimate knowledge of some of the stakeholders we're trying to work with to get that sense upfront. So those are some of the things we're working on right now.
Thank you, Mr. Fordham. Ms. Stoner, or I mean, Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, just a quick follow up. I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to who those external stakeholders might be that we're trying to engage at this point? And how do we, I guess my concern is like, how, how are we identifying? And how do we make sure that we're not missing anybody from that list? Who perhaps then come to our mind, like, we see the district operating in a certain way and we live it day in and day out. There are very many different perspectives on how that work is completed. And I'm just really cognizant that we might miss something if we continue to keep this internal and internally reflective as opposed to external. So if you can identify who some of those stakeholders are, maybe that would be helpful.
Sure, well, I think, I think the stakeholders will vary project to project depending on the decision that we're trying to make. But I think it's, it's the framework that we're trying to lay out with the stakeholder mapping is more a process to understand how people are impacted and and what wears on my face. But that involves working with members of the community who may have, who may have knowledge of those stakeholders. So it's it's recognizing that it's not just the district doing that internally, but going out and and having conversations with the people that are actually in the community to some help identify some of those stakeholders. So in terms of how we know if we if we're connecting with everyone, I think that comes with conversations throughout the process and asking people who else needs to be at the table and if anyone has been missed and not waiting till the end of these decisions to to kind of have those conversations. But we're working through that throughout the whole process.
Hope I've answered your question.
Counselor, I understand you need to turn.
Thank you. The recommendation before us then is that the District of Squamish adopt the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Access Idea Committee Terms of Reference. Would somebody move this recommendation? Counselor Herford, a seconder? Mayor Elliott, thank you. Any further discussion? Then I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Kidner, Mr. Fordham.
Thank you.
Thank you.